Good evening, everybody. Everybody's coming in. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our March 15th workshop. It is a primarily workshop about the budget, but we have some small bits of business that we need to get out of the way before we do that. So first, opportunity to request a vote to add or modify agenda items. Okay, hearing them. And announcements from anyone. I'd just like to say thanks to the crews who dealt with the snowstorm. Both roadways and facilities, the police and fire today. Bang up job responding, thankfully not bang up, actually. Okay.
Adjustment to the announcement that I made last time about the CCA. So it turns out we actually have a couple more days for review, so we'll discuss it briefly. We'll get the bids, the proposals from energy suppliers in time to discuss briefly next week and then the following week on the 29th. We expect that Jessica Stromback, who's the CEO of Jewel, can come and present to us and help answer our questions. And that also gets the the board time and public time to look at the bids and have questions for her and then we can discuss. And then make a vote then, and then we need to turn that right around. And it's due to Jewel on our decision on the 30th. So just to say a little bit more. They're, oh, but that's not, so just to be clear, that's separate. That is a different process, right? That's like an individual choice. And this is our people's choice. And also forward to board members, a little bit of the background info. So you can as part of your
Perfect. And have they sent us any updated materials for the website? And we asked for a modification on a poster, but I haven't seen those posters.
Yeah, glad to act with Jeff.
Just to make sure that we have up. The other Jeff, yes, one of the many jobs that we have on the website, what folks need to see. Okay. The first item is authorizing mayor to sign an intermunicipal agreement with Putnam County for our ARPA funds. So we kept this off ages and ages ago. The lawyers have been talking back and forth to each other. It's pretty straightforward. Any questions or discussion? May I have a motion then?
I have a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the mayor signing the contracts for the intermunicipal agreement between the county of Putnam and
All in favor? Thanks. Also, continuation of previous discussion. The Fireman Service Award, the hours or responses to events had to be posted in the firehouse for 30 days to give the opportunity for any correction that was needed. It was posted, we had, there were none requested, right? So now the board needs to approve the final listing. And then once it's approved, it gets sent to Penflex. Penflex is the company that manages the, that fund, the retirement and service award fund, so that they can update their records accordingly. So any discussion, any questions for Jeff? Okay, so I would make a motion to approve this final listing and to send it to Penflex. In favor? Any opposed? And the last is approval of minutes from the eighth week. You know, Eliza had some edits. I requested a small one this afternoon, which was clarifying page numbers here, but on the third page that the funding model I was talking about was for the county transportation, not clarifying that point. Any other needed changes or comments, questions? Thank you. We have a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of 11823 with the amendments proposed by Mayor Boy.
Good.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
All right, approval of bills. Who's got the batch?
Motion to approve batch 6852 in the amount of $91,704 and
Any discussion before we vote? Okay, all in favor?
I.
Opposed? Oh, I, and I say I. Any opposed? All right, let's move on to budget. So just for a little bit of context, we have Michelle Ascalillo with us. She is our village accountant. She is the, the master of the budget and a brilliant mind with numbers. So the village operates on a fiscal year of June 1 to May 31st. And there are the three funds, the village budget, general fund, water and sewer. And developing the budget is a collaborative collaborative process among the trustees and the village staff with consideration of public input. It's a process, this formulation of drafting, revising and improving. So this is a workshop tonight, and we're putting ideas on the table and their merits and feasibility will be debated. What, what the public sees in our backup for tonight's meeting will change. Ah, trustee, that's Irene. Thought you were tweets joining in. Sorry, Irene. The glasses threw me off. So what the public sees in the backup for tonight's meeting will change probably several times. And there are going to be multiple workshops in the coming weeks, and we'll take public comment at the end of each workshop. There'll be a public hearing before the budget is adopted and revisions may be made after that hearing. So the point is, there are lots of opportunities. There will be lots of opportunities between now and budget adoption for questions, comments and creative thinking, and we need to build the budget together. So what have we done so far? On March 1st, we had our initial public conversation on budgeting. We discussed which outstanding projects were likely to complete in the remaining months of the current budget year, and our staff, teams and our consultants are in the field working on those. We went through the initial wish lists from staff and trustees for next year's budget. And we asked the accountant to formulate budget proposals under different revenue scenarios, varying tax rates, so we can compare and consider options. So since then, Michelle and the trustees have been working with department heads to refine the wish list. And the accountant has taken the wish list and applied them to line by line budget worksheets, which they have in front of us tonight. Now we take those worksheets and we determine what's feasible and not everything will be. We're going to have to make hard choices, separating wants from needs and prioritizing things, just like every household in the village does. And tonight we start with a line by line of the general fund. So the majority of village services, including police, garbage, sidewalk and road maintenance, record management, they're all paid for through this fund. Sources of revenue for the general fund include property taxes, permits and fees, parking meter fees, parking contracts, rental of real property, such as the boat club, funding from New York State, fines, franchise fees, grants and intermunicipal agreements. So tonight's discussion will shape our conversations around property taxes, which will be continued in later sessions as well. As we look at goals for the process, maintain and enhance quality of life for village residents, keep village taxes as low as possible while maintaining sound operating practices. Address deferred infrastructure and maintenance issues, prioritizing life safety issues and asset preservation. Realistically assess costs in the village, just as individual families experience increases across the economy from milk to gas, the village's expenses rise over time as well. Provide a safe, healthy work environment for the employees who do the heavy lifting in all of our departments for all of us. And last, conduct the budget process transparently. So this is the first of, of that transparent process. We'll turn it over to Michelle. Get us going.
Okay, so before you is a draft version of the general fund budget. It's balanced right now. There's a lot of assumptions. There's inclusions, things that are excluded. We'll need somewhere to start. So this is where we start. If we start on the revenue, the revenue is not as many lines as the expenses. I think the revenue can be mostly a line by line if we want to. When we get to the expenses, there's a lot of lines that can be discussed, but there's also you can group things by departments for smaller items. And ask questions as we go, think, think about things and just have conversations around are the trustees comfortable with these numbers? Should they be increased, decreased, removed? That's a workshop I'd like to mention. So if everybody wants to follow along with the revenue, the first one is the taxes. So in this draft version of the budget, the tentative will be done for March 20th. So we'll make some changes before that's published on the 20th. This is a 50% increase of the maximum allowable tax levy that the village is authorized. So it's roughly 88,000 as a max that we can increase from last year. This includes 44,000 of an increase from last year, which is half of what we're allowed to. As we go through revenues and expenses, we can circle back. Is that good? Is that too high, too low? Where do we need it to be? But we have, so our thoughts starting in the middle. This is the starting point.
Can you say again? You said compared to last. What was the part about last year?
So the tax levy from last year, 1,822. The state, based on their calculation, rate of inflation, the growth, they give you a number of how much you can increase taxes over last year. We're allowed to bring in an extra 88,000. But this is bringing in 44 more. So the property tax levy is combined from the Fireman Service Award and property tax line. The other Fireman Service Award line, line three, this is the amount of money based on formulas that the village set up years ago for Nelsonville and Phillips Town to pay a portion of the Fireman Service Award for Low Staff for our volunteer fire company in Cold Spring. This number is combined with a contribution from Cold Spring. So the total firing service award payment only gets to the expenses of 32,000, which came down a little bit. It's usually been at 35,000. And that's why from last year to this year, you'll see it go from 18,000 on the tax levy to 16. And then the other half is here on the service award from others, 16,8 to 15.
It's 52% of the total that the village taxpayers and 48% gets charged back to Nelsonville and Phillips Town. And that follows along with the overall budget and what we bill them for fire protection service.
48 from Phillips Town and Nelson.
Phillips Town is 29 and a half, Nelsonville 19 and a half, or 18 and a half.
Thanks.
Interest and penalties. This is a very rough estimate. We can't predict who's not going to pay their taxes and have penalties assessed. But based on trends, came up with 9,500. Occupancy tax. This is a new line item, and this one definitely we need to talk about. Occupancy tax, the village is able to charge, but the village doesn't have the occupancy tax law. Do something that's very important is to determine when or estimate when that's going to happen if we want to include this in the budget. I'm always hesitant to put something in the budget when something's not on the books. But if it's really going to happen, you know, in the next couple of months, I think we have to really work towards it and pick a date and then make calculations from that.
So it's just sent the enabling legislation to John first and asked him to formulate the local version, the, the local text, like our parking text, which mirrors the state enabling legislation should be very similar. It shouldn't be a heavy lift. Some of it is scheduling, we need good public hearing on it. So I need to work with you. What do you clerk, meaning, sorry, to figure out when that seems feasible in the suite of meetings we have coming up over the next few weeks. I'm not looking for an answer right now. I'm saying we need to figure out. Yeah. So I don't think it's, I don't think it's a heavy lift.
So are we thinking like August, September, December?
To get it on the books or to be levying it?
To be levying it.
Well, it seems as if from the conversation we had, we've got two pieces. We've got, meaning you and I had, we've got what can go into effect right away with existing businesses, with existing hotels and beds and breakfast. And then we've got short-term rentals, which is still has some work to do. So I would say that the we talked about doing a sort of a more by, by hand billing for existing businesses until we have Granicus Online managing the larger process of occupancy tax, because there are so few. And we talked about Hudson House, Pick Hill. There's called Silver Spoon, but Cold Spring and what? And Foundry.
They've done those four. Some, some of them have two night minimums. Especially during the busy season, April to November. So just based on the hotels, the two night minimum based on their current room rating and only two nights a week, April to November, take that total 5% and that's where this 15,200 comes from.
Do you think that with that small number, if we were to pass that, if we were to have the public hearing and get that passed in the next month, that it's reasonable to start out incorporating that number right from the beginning on June 1?
I have it right now, starting September 1st. In all reality, I don't think it's going to happen in four weeks.
Yeah.
Given, given all of the other elements that we have on the calendar. So
Process in general is just a lot slower than that. So I would have to agree with them. We don't get anything done in four weeks.
We just re-strive. So what do you think is a, in terms of calendaring? What do you think if John were to get us the draft in the next two weeks?
Man, I have September 1st right now. I was worried September 1st was too soon.
To be honest, I don't think it's too soon for that portion. For that, for the, for the established business portion.
So then we can leave it at September 1st now.
I think if you feel more comfortable with being conservative with September until we have that feedback from John, I think that's the way we should go.
Well.
Make changes.
Yeah, right. Once it, it, you know, say a miracle happens, we get ready and going for July 1st, which is my fantasy. And suddenly we make more than 15,000. Like what happens next year at this time of the year, we say, oh, we've got this much more money in our fund balance. And then we
Better to plan for less.
That's right. Yeah.
On this website, who sometimes would be conservative? That's why we end up sometimes with a fun balance. If you have reoccurring revenue, you can add reoccurring expenses. These are just all concepts to keep in mind as we move through the night. But that's, that's where I came up with the starting point. You know, we could think about, are these hotels really booked a minimum of three nights a week? You know, I don't know any of that.
Right. This is a new area for the village.
I think until we have a year's worth of data, it's pretty hard to project with reliability.
There's the issue of getting the law on the books and there's an issue of getting the process down.
Right. Well, that's why I'm focusing on established, established businesses, because that piece is going to be easier than
But there's
Sure, sure, that we have to build.
What's going to go? I know that when we're talking about it and it's coming, so I think we should put something in. It's just how much.
I think the, as you've laid out, the formula, right, looking at estimating number of nights and starting in September as a, as a decent conservative starting point. And it puts fire under our feet to move, to move it forward. I would really love for July to be real. Okay.
The next one is franchising. So franchise fees are the payment that we get from alts. There's an agreement that the village has with alts every year, and they pay up a certain percentage of the business that they do in the village for optimal. So that's where that number comes from. So through the years, it's usually been around, you know, 44, 45,000. However, the past two quarters, we've seen a drop. So it was always like 11,000, maybe even 12,000 a quarter. It went down to 9,900, it bounced down to 9,000. So people dropping cable and all that. So using the last two quarters as a predictor instead of, usually I do a three or five year trend, but I don't think it's appropriate. So using the last two quarters, that's where I came up with the 38, which is why it's lower than in years past. Makes sense. The franchise technology grant was a one-time thing when we renewed the contract with alts. Police fees are minimal.
Excuse me, Michelle, remind me that the alts agreement is a five-year, 10-year? 10-year. So we're not going to see that again for some time. Okay.
Police fees is very minimal right now. I don't have rec events budgeted as revenue at the moment. And so I don't have police fees revenue budgeted, because the police fee revenue would be when we charge back to the private events, the ticketed events for police coverage. Building at permit fees is down. This is due to Butterfield being substantially complete for next year. So the village has been a little higher the past couple of years, but now that development is almost done, this number has to come down. Vital statistics fees. This is birth certificate. It's $10 copy for birth certificate. Also, the, the real ID where everybody needed a birth certificate to get a new driver's license. That's right. So the uptick in that has gone down because people aren't scrambling as much, meaning that deadline.
So the numbers that we were seeing in the last few years were inflated because of that. And where we are now in your projection is more
Where, where, where is it all before they came out with this?
Got it.
Real ID enhanced ID. Parking lots and garages. This is the parking fee created by Ford Main and the Hudson House for parking privileges at Fodden Street and in municipal lot. Those were agreements. 40 main agreement is relative to the new Hudson House. They've had the same
Yeah, they'll be revisited.
Couple of years now, so that might be time to revisit and renew that agreement.
Do we know when it was?
November of '21, maybe?
Oh, wow.
So they've been paying the, it was on a 3% increase for three years, and now they've just been paying the highest, the last amount of that agreement. It's like four, roughly four, 50, 460 a month.
Four, 45?
Yeah.
I think it's 456 a month. Something. It's, it's not as big as the 40 main one.
And is that the, so there's a really big jump here. 40 main, is that 40 main? That, that takes the revenue from like 5,000 to 25?
And that's already, that's on a three-year cycle. So we'll get that, that again in June. We have a three-year agreement.
With 40 main?
240 main jumped the first year. Their agreement in the first year.
They paid the same amount.
A part of it is parking waivers. It wasn't all for renting the municipal lot, and that's why it jumped again. And now this number is the 30,000 and did more to continue their agreement. Parking meter fees, another area where there's a lot of what-ifs and projections. So right now for parking meter fees, 160,000. In the past and currently, the village has metered the municipal lot and the extra spots on Fair Street. There is conversations to meter Main Street. If Main Street was metered at $3.50 on the holidays and weekends. And then you start on September 1st, did 70% maximum in busy months, 35% maximum, or 35% occupancy December to March. I came up with 118,000 for Main Street. And then you add that into municipal lot and Fair Street at 42,000 and we get 160. So the $3, nothing has been decided on the books. So the 350 an hour is an estimate right now. And September 1st is an estimate as well. Feedback on those estimates?
Well, I think our discussion was that we were going to go for $4, but that was, that was
I recall to that we had, we had to make the lots lower to incentivize people there and hire on Main Street.
Yeah. And the pricing on the lots is, we're also talking about reconsidering because it's quite low too. So those numbers could be adjusted and the fee schedule could be updated. So what they are, the fees at, at the municipal lot on Fair Street and Mayor's Parker, $2 an hour on the weekends and holidays and $1.50 an hour for weekdays. So if we can leave it that way, where we can raise them 50 cents. And then, like I said, I think that we had discussed making Main Street $4, but we did. So we should maybe reevaluate that at $4.
If we go up to $4, using the same assumption of several percent, you have 35% more lower months, that gives us an extra 16,900 revenue.
That's not insignificant.
And again, this is a first year thing. So we'll have to see how it works. I know everybody tells me that Main Street is tough, but there's also a four-hour limit now. We're going down to three hours on Park Mobile. There's more turnover. I just, I put 70%. I don't feel comfortable using every single space every hour.
I agree. And do you feel like that? Do you still feel comfortable with that or is that pushing that?
I don't know the village to know. Just know 100% not easy. So the 70% for me is kind of arbitrary. But I don't, we need, again, we need a starting spot. And until we have data, we won't really know what it looks like.
Say again what month you did?
Starting September 1st. I have 70% occupancy, December, October, November, April and May. And then 35% from December to March. And just the weekends and holidays. Keep in mind too, to go up to $4, they're paying a 35 cent transaction fee on every, not on every hour, but every day. Excluded from these, any revenue is residential parking permits on this side of the track. Is that something that's closer to being done or something to keep off?
I wouldn't keep it off the entire year. It will go in and in at the same time. So I think we should yeah, calculate with September 1st at the same time, having them go into place.
And that's $50 of permit?
$50 of permit for all homes with a driveway. $35 of permit for all no driveway homes and their second one is 50.
So, and all of this needs to come, this is what we have discussed. Eliza's in process of making the code revisions, but then obviously have to be posted, then they notice for a public hearing. So
These are proposed. They have not been adopted. So it's hard to make a budget on that, I'm sure. But $50 is a good estimate.
And are you gonna, when you make your estimate, will it assume that some people will do, will opt out of that spray, especially people who have driveways, only have one car or bother to get the other one?
Like Eliza had run some numbers on number of permits that, you know, may be issued. I'd probably cut it in half. So that would, the estimated is I think 7,800, so call it 4,000 for now. I have to run them more precisely, but about
So, sorry, when you're ready.
Parking rec charges. This is down because we have said there's nothing, no ticketed rents planned right now.
Because the village board was already moving forward at that. Yep. So the, the rec commission, they meet tomorrow night, actually. Yep, so the the rec commission, they need to our night, actually. Um, they're revising code and process, um, I don't know that we'll get. We had, we had two applicants that we've had in the past um come forward, we wanted to work some of those, we wanted to look wisely at the numbers and then think about what the actual costs are in terms of staff time, et cetera, and not, not just uh, not just costs on. And make sure we were, our prices were where they needed to be. Um, so we had a more, we have a moratorium through June and the recognition's working on it, um, I would hope we could came back at least one event in the fall, but I, given that it's not predictable, I think it's smart to leave it out. Now.
The backside fees, um. Since we've been accepting, the village has accepted um things that that might want to vote, so, and that was a first with uh perfect zero. Um, zoning fees, planning board fees, H D R, H D R D fees, um, they're on average, and how many applicants come, there's usually not a lot, not a ton, so it's a hundred, a hundred, six hundred. Refuse and garbage charges. This is the amount estimated of all the add-on services, so residents and property owners that purchase service for additional carts.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we have to refill them because uh and then the revenue would come here and then our contract plus that expense will be on the expense side.
Okay. And we bill or Royal bills?
We.
We bill, so we need to figure that out, and that is when, May, April, I can't remember when we, April.
March, April.
Majority are in, yeah, say April first.
Okay.
Royal had a a three percent increase in their contract for year two. Some stuff, um, I could get rid of some of my items that had zero, they were just there in the past, they didn't have all of them.
It's useful to have them here for the first round.
You know, tree removal applications, if the village gets one February of the year, it's, can't predict that.
And it's also such a small amount that. It's not really make or break.
Fire protection services for Phillips Town and Nelsonville, this is a good percentage, you know, we take the low sap amount, we would, we take the expenses for the building, for regular building maintenance, not capital improvement on the firehouse. And the fire protection services budget that the firehouse request.
Mm-hmm.
Take all that together, divide it by the percentages, and here's the other portion of Phillips Town and Nelsonville uh for coming here. Interest and earnings, this is the interest on money in the village's bank accounts.
What's the blank line of refuse and garbage service to other, oh, that's the county money that was withdrawn, yeah.
Yep, sorry. Thousand dollars on the interest.
Shot to try again this year.
Have you had the session or not?
No, I haven't, I said it's, it seems to be a good time to try to have the discussion again with the new administration. Um, I was encouraged in the state of the county address to have him, um, the county executive burn referenced, had him as a Hudson River County and made a number of nods to the west, so doesn't hurt to try.
How your budget been adopted?
Not in the budget processes in the fall. Their budget processes in the fall.
Permits, vendor parking others, the bulk of this, this is thirty four thousand, this is for Seastreet. So if the Royal Chad 2 Streets comes with same amount of docking that they did last year, assuming that they didn't cancel, and we follow the same schedule, same number, and everything docking here, West Point. You know, that's thirty four thousand, three hundred.
I was thinking about that, you know, they, there were a number of cancellations due to rain last, last year. Um, and I'm wondering if we shouldn't be more conservative in what we estimate coming in to, from them because of that.
There was one, two, three, four, five cancellations last year.
And it was like twenty four or something that actually came in.
Twenty four dockings.
No, the, the amount that came in, twenty four thousand.
Twenty eight thousand?
Twenty seven thousand, nine hundred eighty.
And how much have we expected to get? Thirty four, so it's what's budgeted here.
What, I mean, last, what was the con, our agreement with them, we.
Five cancellations? I don't remember the amount of each.
Between thirty two and thirty five thousand.
Well, we were expect, if at the budget time, we didn't know when they were working on, so this seems the worksheet, same thing, thirty four thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars would have been if they didn't cancel.
So I use that something like fifty thousand dollars less than we expected.
Yeah, so we could all consider our approach with them, we, they were requested that flexibility to cancel for bad dates. And in the past, the village did not give them that privilege, and it was us thinking on fairness grounds, but if you think about it, we're reserving these dates. No other agencies or folks can come and dock on those dates when they reserve them, and if they cancel this, then we're out the funds and it's affecting our budget, so I would recommend that we go back to the former policy and just say, sorry, no cancellations for the month, like if, if you've requested and booked it with the village, like you, it's up to you whether you wanna run your boat or not, but we can't refund you for the amount.
Also, what if somebody else wanted to use the dock and we say no to them, and then that's what's driving it?
That's right, so, and that hap, that happened, there were requests from West Point around here, on parents' weekends, and we had to decline because the dock is reserved for Seastreet.
There's also the dock fees, um, the actual dollar amount paid per foot, not sure if that has been updated in a while, that's another.
Did we modify that amount?
I thought we increased it, um, I'll have to go back and look at my notes.
I don't, I don't remember. I don't think we did raise it.
Ten and twelve or eight.
Eight and twelve.
Eight, twelve.
Yep, eight and twelve.
That's right, we did not.
From the.
You know, the other thought too, so their contract, because um the thought process was, I believe, hey, they pay for the docking fees, there's no discount there, um. The officers are now included in that docking fee, and the, the toilets are now included in that fee.
Mm-hmm.
Just things to consider, um, the thirty four thousand is straight, eight dollars a foot, twelve dollars a foot, thirty four thousand.
So we need to, we need to modify. I get nervous long term um about relying on that as a revenue model because we are not, we are not the only dock on the river and Seastreak has in last year, they raised a number of times, you know, other docks they're looking at, um. For now, for now, we're reliable for them, or we're, we, we, we rely on them, I don't know that that will always be the case. So, um, I'm not saying, saying take that, take it out, I'm, but I am saying we need to be mindful, that may not always, it may not always be there in the, in the way that it was before in those numbers, and I, I do agree with Eliza that going back to cancellation policy is good, um, and I agree with you that that fee might be the price per foot should be considered, go ahead.
No, no, just thinking that those all, those sound like negotiations that are hard to count on, right? Like it, it may be that we say, okay, we, we don't want to allow you to do cancellations, and then they'll say, okay, well, then we only want to do half the number.
That's right.
And, and so just with your conservative mind, thinking maybe the thirty four thousand, it also then doesn't give us any flexibility to say, maybe we want less impact on the village on those weekends, let's consider it, if we walked ourselves into a high number. So I guess my preferences would be to reduce it.
I feel the, I feel the same way that we, that we have become dependent on Seastreak in a way that, you know, it was a different story in two thousand seventeen, it was a different story in two thousand eighteen, um, and, and now we are dealing with just huge flows of people.
And, and finding other ways to um drive revenue from those stores that are more significant. Compensating that for the fact that they're already here, yeah, right, like parking, right, occupancy.
I mean, I, I get the argument that it's, they're coming by car, not by boat, but people are coming by car anyway. It's not stopping, um, and so if there's, that, that seems like smarter way to monetize.
Yeah.
Visitor traffic, looking at who's already here.
Yeah.
And who knows what they're gonna come back with this year, I mean, they, Seastreak struggled last year, they struggled to, to sell tickets, um. So who knows what their model's gonna look like?
Right, they were most, I mean, were close to capacity, it's not like they were standing up.
They did fine, yeah.
Yeah.
When they, when they.
When they, but they can't go when they weren't gonna cancel, when they weren't doing fine, you know. Some of it was weather, some of it was weather.
But that's also like up to them what policy they have for their customers, like, just because it rained doesn't mean the boat doesn't fail, like.
So other five cancellations. Three of them were in September and the other two were the first weekend in October, so they're not canceling October, from November, September one.
Yeah, and September when we were late.
So leaves.
Well, then, uh, they also got a really late start on sales.
Yep.
And that was because negotiations started, started very late, so I, I think we should, you know, just bank on those high weekends, so like.
October, November.
Yeah, October, November, and like, don't count September.
September would be a plus if it were.
Yeah.
That seems a smart approach, but to your point, other revenue as well.
Yeah. They canceled five. But in all of September, there was eight, you know, so five was sixty three hundred, if you bump it to eight, you know, the revenue's gonna come down. Significantly, um, if they pay either a thousand or they pay sixteen hundred, depending on the circumstances of the docking where they dock. And then where they park, where they stay. All right, um. We at least take out the five, you know, to have a buffer for some cancellations for September. From between five and eight. Wait, wait. Parking labor fees are one time fees paid by business owners, they'll have to go for one of the board for the code and parking base amounts based on their business, so that we can't really budget for unless we know something's in process during the budget time. Um, but I don't know of any possible parking.
And as of now, there aren't any vacancies.
There's a retails joint going into the old hard hardware, so that won't really be any change, it's not a restaurant, it's not a hotel. Um, Karen's Kismet is open, but it will most likely be retail too.
Food town expansion.
Food town is for sale?
Yeah, not at all.
No.
They, they going into Soho?
The salon?
Uh-huh, okay.
I don't know if they have to go back before the planning board, if they have to look at parking waves, it may not impact it at all, but
Right.
And if it does, it's not gonna be.
It's gonna be huge.
Yeah.
So Michelle, how did you arrive at the four thousand seven hundred and fifty?
Those are actual, that's what we, that's an actual.
Oh, sorry, it is, I'm looking at, I was looking at it as if it was draft. Looking at the wrong one, okay, so you, you have not budgeted?
I usually don't because we don't.
Because we don't know what's gonna happen, got it.
That's right.
The next one is parking fines and forfeits, the, the, the fines and fees that come through uh the village court. Trending, um, it would be a little bit lower than seventy seven thousand. But parking tickets are included, and if you're metering more spots, natural progression is that there would be a couple extra parking tickets. If we don't meter, I would take the number down, but if you know goes through, and so that's why it's jumped from the prior year.
It looks like the the actuals a couple of years ago were a lot lower, and then do you think that this year's actuals will jump, will get up to the projection?
COVID, there were, yeah, there was so much that, the spending.
More attention.
Well, the, the courts, during COVID, the courts shut down and, right, there was a lot.
Yeah. But do you think this year worth the target to get to our, get up to the seventy thousand?
Yes, so this forty four thousand is um seven month in, that's averaging sixty four times five. So that was thirty two, so thirty two and forty four would be over. Um, and then it's like seasonal, um, so you tend to see more revenue, uh, with the influx of people.
Yep.
But we're on cap, okay, I think uh a lot of things when we're going through this, if we're comparing year to date from January, to keep in mind, January is seven months in. However, a lot of bills are billed one month, maybe even two months behind, so just because it's it's in the accounting software as of January thirty first, but there's gonna be no monthly January bills included in that. Um, so same thing for revenue, the January revenue's not included in here, because of December for the specific one, I think. Now, real property.
Unpredictable.
Unpredictable, um. Last year, we knew that um the, the village was planning on selling one piece, ended up selling I think a little bit more, maybe two, and that's why the number's higher than the budget, but right now, we don't have anything that I believe would be after June in the works. Okay, if anything comes up as we go.
I could think of two that probably.
You think will come up in the next, but in the next year?
Well, there's Stone Street.
Stone Street.
Oh, right.
Oh, right, right, I'm not sure if that's moving forward though.
Um.
Has he communicated again?
Travis, uh, one hasn't, one has, so, and the one that has, it just has to move forward without.
Okay, so it may be one of the properties rather than two, okay, this could be quite small. It is a tiny area, it's, you know, it's a soup situation, basically, it's not a soup, but it's an equivalent, yeah.
And then depending on what happens with thirty seventh Fair Street, the timing on that.
But that seems likely to be this budget year. And that's twenty, that's twenty thousand, but it's this budget year.
Yeah.
Okay. Roughly.
Sales of equipment, um, we had budgeted, so two years ago roughly, um, the village had done an auction of um surplus municipal, broken down equipment, that people find salvage value in it and bid on it. Um, the thought was to do it again this year, um, since we haven't done it this year, might as well save the few things and do it all in June. Take the revenue all in June or July, and then up a couple extra things. So I put eighteen thousand, there are two garbage trucks, two police cars, um, and then a couple miscellaneous things at the highway garage, um. So.
So there were title delays, right, what's, what's, what held it back, what held that going to auction? Just the actual process of advertising, or was it?
The village moving forward with.
Everything with titles and.
It could be titles, it could be somebody putting a, to actually move forward with the auction, it's just a lot of moving parts.
Okay.
If we plan for it better, and we need to count on the revenue.
Yeah.
Um, which is, the village is a whole, stays on top of it better.
Sounds good.
But as far as I know, the four vehicles are ready to go.
They're sitting there, really ready to go.
Eighteen thousand is, again, I have no idea what something's gonna cost, um, you know, if I thought maybe fif, five for each truck minimum, and then, you know, the street for each police car. And then miscellaneous stuff, could be higher, could be lower.
Okay.
Uh, the other three, it's, it happens when flound insurance recoveries, if insurance, you know, I guess it's a check to repair a car, refund a prior expenditure if we overpaid for something. Um, or, you know, Nimer comes in a lot and we pay our premiums and then they give us a like a good neighbor discount or a good client discount, and, you know, it applies to the prior year, so, you know, one year you see like, there's thirteen thousand, refund the prior year, some choose, we got refunds from multiple insurance companies for that year.
Can you remind, remind us what the eleven thousand miscellaneous revenue was? In twenty one, twenty two?
Off the top of my head, I don't recall.
Whatever it was, it's great.
I think some, at least one person on a large tax go overpaid their taxes in duplicate, and I refunded it the prior, the following year. Um, and I did move it, and I should have deferred that five thousand for when it refunded, um, there's a big title mix up, that was, I think, fifty nine hundred a thousand.
Okay.
Date revenue, which is the aim, money that hasn't changed in over ten years, uh, fifteen thousand from the state. State revenue, which is the aim, money that hasn't changed in over ten years, uh, fifteen thousand from the state. Mortgage tax, um, so typically mortgage tax. Um, it's fifteen thousand or so for six months at a clip. Due to COVID and the high turnover in real estate, mortgage tax is a fee for selling your house, and that's exactly what it sounds like. Um, you know, so during COVID, those numbers jumped, so we were bringing in fifteen, sixteen for a half a year. Then went to thirty-two, thirty, came down to twenty-four, down to twenty. So again, instead of doing a five-year trend, have to realize there was an anomaly. I think thirty-one thousand based on the past eighteen months.
Hitting every municipality hard across button them.
A lot of blanks are on some grants that the village has had in the past. Uh, CHIPS, uh, CHIPS pay, um, with various. High DOT highway programs, this is drawdown fund, so the village has three hundred and fifty-nine thousand roughly to draw down on projects. Uh, this is in the revenue and it's the same on the expense side. Doesn't mean we're gonna use it all.
No, but. Um, Fishgillen, so we're engineering for. Fishgillen. Mountain, thank you, um, and Faire Street. And those are big projects, it'll take chunks. I don't know if it'll take ch- chips, but the, um, all of the, I don't know, chips is applicable in all cases, but. Hopefully be able to use a chunk for some portion of it.
Some other blanks, um, that was for the Main Street project, the federal aid that the village had done a couple of years ago. You know, that's always another thing, it's a huge process to get on, um, the DOT federal funding, um, but it's happened before, it could happen again. Um, inter-fund transfers, fund balance, right now I have forty-eight thousand allocated from fund balance, these are for specific. Projects. Um, so that forty-eight thousand is needed to, um, offset some of the expenses to have this balanced budget, they're not one-time things. It would be for, you know, the increased engineering, it would be for some storm drain work, things like that. The village board can decide to allocate more fund balance. Would be on the revenue and the expense tag for village-wide repairs, as we've done in the past. I just don't know a number to put there, depending on what the village board wants to move forward with.
Well, we may, so. Also on federal aid, Lauren, I've been working with iconic identifying funding options toward. Um, toward dam, um, it's not likely to be major work in the next year, but maybe some element of. Um, engineering or property acquisition, like. Of course, it'll be in the waterfront, alright, I was thinking federal money, I was thinking EPA, sorry. Um. Okay. So you're looking for, you're looking for guidance tonight on. So tell me about how you. So we have, we have the grant, I assume that the grant from Galif, the DASNY money. Is not.
I don't have it in here now, I think that a portion of it will need to be in the final draft of the budget.
Yeah.
But I also think we need to have a good handle on, and I don't like to put two hundred fifty thousand of revenue and two fifty of expenses when the DASNY one is like a three-year project.
Yeah, 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 makes sense.
Okay, so work on that, um, the, the upside to that is because it's a grant, at least, it's, it's revenue and expense or net zero. So I'm not too worried about solving that today, I'm more worried about the stuff that impacts the ups and downs of the budget. The same thing like the fund balance doesn't impact it, um, except for this forty-eight, so that forty-eight, just to go over real quick. Twenty-five thousand in engineering, five thousand in village hall repairs, um, four thousand in, um, non-chips resurfacing. Highway had requested four thousand to do smaller paving jobs, not pot holes. Uh, three thousand for Ted Fink as a village planner to continue the work, if that's something that we need.
Can you say the one before that again?
Uh, resurfacing, so paving four thousand. And eleven thousand in storm drains.
So this chunk, we marked FB for fund balance. I think it's smart to have. There's a storm. And these, when the storm drain, that, the catch basins that he's been, or is it something different? Yes, it is. And that would be with a contractor? Or is that materials or?
It could be either, okay, maybe materials or contractor, um, in the past, uh, we contracted some of it out from the highway department, had some of it. Um, to get some of the worst ones moving, um, maybe contract some of the larger ones out, and then do some of the, the simple ones in-house. Start using the fund balances and allocated and to continue that process into the following year. What's not included in the revenue, um, which we talked about briefly, is anything about SDR, no SDR occupancy tax, permits application. Nothing like that, um, if that comes in, it shouldn't be included, um. We have to have, um, a conversation about what kind of numbers for that, but I don't know if we're ready for that conversation for today.
I think we need to, we need some more. Information. We need some information, I mean, we could, you could, you could take, right, if we're. The direction that chapter one hundred is going is limiting it to permits to forty. Um, so you could, you could estimate. You could estimate applications, I guess, toward the fall. But we'll know better in the coming weeks as we've worked with, on those last decisions with Jen, when the. When the, um, revisions are adopted.
But that's the maximum allowed, it doesn't mean that.
Right, right, so I was saying some, meaning some portion of that.
And when you look at the SDR, like listings right now, it's only about twenty that are listed, I think, since the village sent off the blooders to all the people who had. Been caught. You know, by half. So. Who knows if they'll continue or if they'll just not do it or if they'll apply, we'll see. We don't know. So many of them may not even be able to.
Have you had any thoughts about opening?
Well. Not predictable, not, not predictable thoughts, other, I think we've estimated as well as we can on parking, hoping that. We can. Get it placed sooner rather than later. The, the place where I see we could have slide is a fall, a fall ticketed event. If rep works through the. Through the spring and gets what they need to do in order in terms of. Ordinance changes, et cetera, and brings that to the board. It's not out of the question to have an event in the fall.
And how much?
Permit, what's the permit fee for Mayor's Park?
I would have no applications for anything in the fall, so it's. I think the one that had asked is. That's a summer event, and I think the October fest one has been pulled back.
Well, they were also talking about locating it on a site other than a village site. But what's the, remind me what the permit fee?
It's twelve hundred dollars a day. It's two to three thousand dollars, four thousand dollars for.
It's not a ton of money for the impact, and I think that's, that's what started us on the conversation in the first place was, is the impact worth? Is the impact on the, on residents worth the revenue?
I think, yeah, roughly, because there was, uh, we budgeted almost eleven thousand, and that was three events, plus a couple little barbecues. Um, let's take out the barbecue, she figures three thousand will roughly on average, an event, thirty-two hundred maybe.
And do you have an amount in there for that, those regular birthday parties, et cetera? Let me find it on the page again.
Parking rec travings, it's like right in the middle, two thousand and one.
Say that again?
Account number two thousand and one.
Yeah, I got it.
Any other revenue comments for moving to expenses? Well, so I think expenses, do we wanna go line by line, or do we wanna do department to department? So in the budget, um, there's sub-titles, and that's gonna be divided into departments, or do you wanna go individual one? I don't mind either way.
I think, I think let's go, just because first Laura hasn't been through the budget process before, so it'd be for familiarizing. Her with the lines, but also the public with what, what it is we're talking about when we. Say contractual, what it is when we talk about, et cetera.
So before we get into line by line, I just wanna go over a couple budgeting basics. Personal services is always going to be payroll wages, it's somebody on the village's payroll. Um, I two hundred account is always gonna be equipment, and a four hundred account is always gonna be something else. Um, the biggest question there always, personal services first contractual. So, personal services, you pay an employee, contractual, you're paying a vendor. Like the bills we approved, um, earlier in the meeting. Salaries and wages are department by department. FICA, which is on everybody's wages, we rolled up into two accounts at the end, there's the benefit section at the end of the budget. Um, health insurance for everybody in the general fund is rolled up into one line. Workers' comp and all that stuff is rolled up at the end, but each department has, um, specific calculations to come up to this number. You start the budget process. All employees. Have a two percent, uh, profit and payment raise, including a misdraft of the budget. And so do the village board members and the ju- the justices. There are no changes to the stipends, um, as in, a couple village employees get stipends for taking on a managerial role, if you will. Um, and those are unchanged, but hourly wages and, uh, annual salaries for. Eleven to fifteen, or all, everything's two percent for this draft.
Okay, and just as a reminder, we did do some pretty significant bumps. Last year to get folks up to what we thought were more, um, appropriate wages.
No, could you speak up a little bit, I'm getting a couple of texts from audience members saying they can't.
Thank you.
I'll readjust my order. Order trustees, personal services, two percent increase, order trustees contractual. Uh, this includes the Zoom, um, we have an upgraded Zoom to have these board meetings. Uh, five hundred a miscellaneous, and fifteen hundred for nightcom, if. Uh, trustees wanted to go to the nightcom annual meetings, um, they went last year, um. So that's in there, and that's why there's an increase from, um, twenty-five hundred. We're thinking about it, um, I have two thousand for Zoom. But I don't think we've upgraded to the two thousand package, and we might not need to, um, so that's something that we might be able to take that out.
One of them have not seemed to be working well for us.
I think it's the basic package, I think the two thousand included scribe work, if we needed it, transcript and services, which we had thought about it because we had needed it for public. Hearings, there was something going on where some of the boards had to have transcribed meetings. And we thought maybe upgrade Zoom altogether, but we never did that, we just paid for the transcription service when we needed.
That seems smarter to me because it is infrequent, it's usually, you know, cases that are, applications that are litigious or.
Um, so that would be a minus eighteen hundred, we could pick that out. Computer support, um, this is.
I was just thinking that also you still have to verify, even if Zoom provides you a transcript, someone still needs to review it to make sure it's accurate, right? It's just the point of a transfer, it's not very good.
They're not very good transcript yet, just to say, I don't, like, in my work, I don't use them.
Some of the heads are not, it takes a lot of work, but.
Computer support, uh, this is for Microsoft Teams and for the support for the trolley.
Say that again?
It's trolling, there's a computer, you have to pay support, monthly fee for the computer, we pay a monthly fee.
Not, not like, not, not trolley that's riding. The after trolley had a computer system, we've been really.
They hammer in the boardroom.
It's a twenty-five dollar month, I think it's twenty-five that for each.
Thank you.
Which is just, that contractor's just renewed, um, some computers went up to thirty bucks, um. Section, um, village justice, two percent court clerk, uh, two percent. Um, I'm gonna jump back and forth between going through the budget and as we hit some lines, things are included and excluded from department requests. Um. This specific department requested a three percent increase for their, um, for the court clerk, for staff. Um. Right now, everybody's at two percent, um, so something. Uh, to keep in mind, I'm gonna go through, we wanna talk about it, save it for other discussions.
And we'll have, we'll have specific personnel discussions as well.
Um, justice contractual, so most of the rest of the court are all the same from last year, you know. Contractual could be any kind of certain, small services they need for the cameras, um, inside the court, and the court clerk and. For her window. Uh, continuing education, they need every year, you know, basic office supplies, post-age software fees. Um, stationery, which is, um, actually printed letterhead, telephone, everybody in the village hall has a telephone line. Um, that's broken out by department. Mayor, deputy mayor.
Nice, so just generally, um, personal services, do you include something for overtime for those who, i- is, how do you, how is that dealt with? Cause I didn't see a particular line for.
So within, um, each line, based on prior trends and prior actual hours worked. There are overtime sometimes built in. Um, so any full-time employee is able to buy out three weeks of unpaid, unused vacation. So I assume that every full-time employee takes that buyout, so that's three weeks worth of extra wages. I also assume that, you know, there are times that not everybody works thirty-seven and a half hours in the office or forty hours. Um, for the laborers, the people outside. Uh, there are court clerk, court, the court has nightly meetings, um, nightly court. Speak, twice a month, night court, twice a month, one during the day, um, so there are extra hours there. Um, the, specifically, it's not always overtime. Um, there could be overtime or it could just be extra hours, so people that aren't full-time, it's just extra hours. Uh. There's also no overtime from thirty-seven and a half hours to forty hours, it's just straight time, um, so that, that's included, um. In the calculations, I have very specific calculations by person on what goes into these lines, um, that we can talk about. Um, if we wanna talk about specific people in a closed session, um, or specific people. Thank you. Um, personal services, two percent, two percent mayor, deputy mayor, mayor contractual, seven fifty, it's been about the same, um. You know, this could be if the mayor wants to attend the seminar or, you know, need some extra office supplies, it can be anything. Auditor contractual, so the, the village has had a contract. For the past eight years with the same auditor, it's probably time to do another RFP. Um, we had a three-year contract and then a five-year contract, it's time to. Not go out to bid but do an RFP again. You know, they might come in the lowest, um, and I don't know, I think that they were very low to begin with, and that's why I jumped it. From sixty-three hundred to seventy-five hundred, they were upping us two percent every year for eight years. Um, and they had come in higher and then wanted to be competitive and came back with the final price, so I'm not sure. So I'm not sure it's going to stay that low. But it's the auditors, like the attorneys, every so often you just, you RFP it and see what's out there.
What's the, what does timing look like on that to work with your schedule? We do audit January, right? So this is a.
No, audits, it's finalized the report in January, but the audit usually.
Happens before.
End of the summer, beginning of the fall.
So this would need, this is something that would need to happen right at the beginning of the budget year.
Happen, you know, kind of like now. I went through the contract and realized, I thought there might have been one more year on it and there's no last. And the auditor is split fifty percent general fund, twenty five percent water, twenty five percent sewer. Accountant, personal services, one, two percent plus a stipend plus some extra hours, but no overtime. Accountant contractual, so this line goes from two thousand and then goes to forty eight hundred down to two thousand luxuries. Every two years, we have to pay for an actuarial service, service. As part of the audit, which is twenty eight hundred. And that's why that's there every other year. Two thousand is for, you know, tax roll prep, mailings, postage, things like that. Budget officer, stipends, it stays flat, budget and other notices. It had typically been two thousand, twenty five hundred and then it went really high. There was a lot of advertisements and legal notices. And now it's trending back down low, so I dropped it from thirty two fifty down to three thousand. You know, also at one time we were advertising a lot in the vacancy journal with this expensive, so if you don't do that, then it's not going to be.
That was for taking in place.
Village clerk, personal service, two percent stipend and, you know, village meetings. No village clerk equipment, village clerk contractual. You know, this is like some postage, there's a village clerk association fees, the minutes booked stuff to do the duties that a clerk would need to do. Not sure why the website falls under village clerk, it could be shared services, but it's here. Civic plus, they've usually increased us five percent each year. So that's included, excluded is any fees if we need, if the village board wanted to make changes to the website. There's been talks about that. If there is a labor fee or an upgraded annual fee, not included here.
Have you heard feedback from them yet?
Reached out and didn't get an answer, but I'll, I'll try guys. Because we need it.
Yeah, I think we will be eager to get the upgrade and. We need to. Yeah, exactly.
E-codes on a separate line? Attorney contractual. It's hard to predict, it's usually around fifty five thousand a budget. The thought is that there might be some more attorney services needed with the fewer trail. So I up this twenty thousand. I don't know if that's a good number, if it's not.
Two, I mean, I think John has stepped up quite a lot in the last, in the last year, but this has not been bid since two thousand six.
Fifteen or sixteen.
And I think that's, I think that's worth doing. How do others feel about that?
It's good to see what costs are trending.
Yeah, and see what, what services maybe.
That's what we should ask to do, keep, keep an eye on things.
Yep.
So maybe this is something that comes down or, I don't know.
We'll see.
I don't know how to predict what, how much the village would spend on attorney. Is it fair to assume that the fewer trail would have some more?
I think it's. But I think it's reasonable to assume, so yeah.
And you know, thinking about it, like twenty thousand dollar increase. It's ninety hours, it's that eight hours, seven, eight hours a month. It's, when you break it down, it's not that much more service. Attorney prosecuting attorney, so in the past, we've had a prosecuting attorney for criminal court. The suggestion of the review board was to have a prosecuting attorney also handle traffic court. So that's built into here. We had given us a proposal, so this is his services for all courts. Engineer, architect, so I have this twenty five thousand being paid out of fund balance to get some projects moving. You know, two years ago was the first time we had an engineering budget in a while. So I upped it because it seems like the village is moving forward with a lot more services to get things going. And this is specifically for non-chips engineering. If work that ends up being chips eligible is engineered, if you do the project, you can go back and recoup some of those engineering costs under chips. At the eligible expense.
On, but not water, not dam, not water and not chips. It's what they left, some sidewalks, some other kinds of. So we've ended up, it, it's been, it's been really valuable having that professional expertise that's moved things forward. But you know, things that you don't necessarily think about, like, oh, what we need to do is deep slope assessment before this property sale, right? We pulled them in for that. It's very, very useful to have them, they've become sort of a, a great ancillary member of the team.
They did some quoting out for the inspections that are being done, so they have the knowledge of the people. So they did like a mini RFP, got quotes that the board voted on two weeks ago.
It's a great time saver. Gets things done.
And then since this number comes from fund balance, if we wanted to up it or down it, it would be a net zero on the budget, but it would affect the fund balance. Records management.
No, just to make the point, I mean, one of the reasons that we have that fund balance is because of the difficulty getting the projects done in this past year and so they are helping solve that. So it's a good justification for using. For some time, that wasn't just a last year, this year issue, it's been that way for.
Records management contractual, this is where we would find E-code. Core proposal is a three-year proposal, I think it was like thirty three hundred a year. Plus a shredder for village hall and we pay eleven dollars a quarter to Ploton County for, they store some of our records. Shared services, this is again, two percent increase for two shared services, staff and village hall. Sorry, so shared services, you know, would be people in village hall that do work village-wide. You know, so take the part-time clerk here, part-time office. She works on water sewer, she works here, she worked a little bit for all of us, so it's a shared service.
Can we go back to records management for a second? Did you say the contractual line includes a new shredder?
No, having the shredder come and clear out.
Oh, oh, the big shredder, okay. The big clean outs.
Because the records retention is usually seven years, so every day we try and turn over stuff. So the shared service, personal service also includes a full-time deputy clerk for village hall. That's included there. And that's why there's a big jump. Shared services for the traction.
Do we expect to hire someone, does this assume full, full year employment?
June first.
Do we think that's going to happen? It is, there has not been that position before and the, the reason we are here now with this proposal is a recognition of.
No, I know, I just mean logistically, are we in a.
We're talking about the next budget cycle beginning in June. We do have, what is the status? We have, we have the job description ready.
Job description's ready.
And we have some of, some of that money in this budget for this year.
Plus we could re-advertise for the position.
It's ready.
Discuss it tomorrow.
Okay, so Nick will be next to, the next round of this, we'll have more. Just knowing it takes a little while to find.
Yeah, yeah, it's been in the works, so I'm more. Yeah, and then again, conservative if we start to first and then. Contractual, this includes cleaning for village hall and the piece of. And he's, you know, some of his needs, stuff that the village office might need.
Where are we with?
I know we've got one set of numbers back on an estimate for other buildings, have we gotten the others yet?
No, they're supposed to get in by Friday this week, so I should have those numbers next week.
I'm, I'm hoping that some of the other members come in significantly lower than.
I expect they will, but I mean, because the one that sent in the bid, when I compared their bids from town hall, they were the highest bidder as well. So I think that the one we've received is the highest, it's going to be the highest and I expect the other to be like a lot lower.
So we took bidders on a tour of all of the municipal buildings to try to see, would it be, does it make sense? Because water and wastewater doesn't get its bathroom cleaned, doesn't get its break room cleaned. It's the same thing with water, right? They were asking our teams to clean their own toilets and, you know, we're paying for public toilets and asking the water superintendent and, and the highways superintendent to clean their toilets, so.
Having an office job and having to clean the toilets in your office.
So if we can, if we can find a way to make it work, I would really like to make it work, at least for some of the buildings. But I think we need some more numbers to know the answer to that.
Right, because right now is status quo. Village hall cleaning, I upped it a little bit because it's typical to have your services go up a little bit every year. And then when we get to a couple lines down, status quo in the bathrooms, there is no additional buildings included. Shared services, computer software, I'm computer spelt wrong, not sure why, I have to fix that.
We're judging you.
It's been like that since before I started, I just haven't programmed it yet.
Oh, you mean literally, it's been over and over.
Every year it just.
It does, yeah, I bet it does.
I'm going to do that now as soon as we.
Next, next time we see this.
Included in this line is fifteen thousand eight hundred for a software for STR management. Included in that piece is five thousand for occupancy tax module, which is something that we may consider adding on at a later time or not needing, depending on the volume of the STRs.
So would they include that or it doesn't?
It does, it's five thousand for that module. You know, we're talking about doing occupancy tax on, by hand on paper for the hotel. We'll get a judge and a feel of how it works. So that's just a thought, a process thought. As we go, I try to call out, you know, bigger ticket items that we can add, delete, you know, to see where we end up. Heating, so village-wide for oil on the heat, electricity and fuel, like gas for the cars. And do an average of how many gallons they've used for past, you know, three, four years. Look at the current trends on the rates, so I'll take, you know, X amount of gallons that they've used, times it by a comparable rate. And then that's where these numbers come from. So for oil, I have a budget at four dollars a gallon, kind of where we're hovering now. Maybe three eighty on the last bill. Electric. The fact is that electric has gone up, especially not being part of the CCA, that CCA had big money in the beginning. So without that, the village does participate in solar on some of its smaller accounts, which is a ten percent annualized savings. But electric is still going up, so this could.
Depending on decisions we make about CCA, this could not, this number could be modified to.
And at least them will know.
It will create consistency, we'll know what the rate is, so usage can change, but, and now I guess the distribution.
Telephone, this telephone also includes internet. So this would be to increase the speed of the internet in the village hall. Copy machine, the increase because we have a new contract this year, upgraded model. Shared services, computer support.
This is the Anthony line.
Yep, this went up, you know, the contract went up a little bit. Also, it includes a new computer and if you hire new staff, you'll have a new monthly fee, you know. So that's included in there. Technology, this would be like fifteen hundred miscellaneous if something breaks or, you know, there's a lot of smaller account lines that they're just miscellaneous, it's, you can't predict how many pens and staples you're going to need. Same thing like with wires. Shared services restroom, so this is three thousand in repairs and then the rest is cleaning. The current cleaning is twenty five a clean on each day of the weekend and the holidays. So that's status quo in this draft.
There's no weekday cleaning there.
What's the repairs? Typically, there are toilet repairs, door hinges, paper towels, there's a lot of minor repairs that go into the bathrooms at the bottom of the street.
Pan and the annual expectation of. Things that break. For repairs, you mean?
They would be in wreck, like wrecked repairs. You know, three thousand might be high, but there have been times when they've had to call in a plumber. And when you do that, because it's a much bigger break.
So, you know, we tear things off a lot.
Yeah, yeah, you know, have to change the whole potometer, like a lot of work has been sometimes done down there.
What is that? What's the next line?
Clearing account gasoline. So when gas is delivered and paid for, it's paid for out of this clearing account because you have to pay the bill. And then I receive fuel logs by the department and then quarterly, twice a year, I go back and I allocate it to the departments. You know, it's never going to clear out perfectly to zero, but the expense goes back to the departments. Village hall repairs and improvement, five thousand coming out of fund balance for, you know, some small cosmetic upkeep in here. Keeping in mind that, you know, we talked about allocating from the fund balance and if there's major work to be done here outside of the Sandy money, you know, that's something that we will put here and in the next line, municipal building.
Maybe this is a place where we drop and we, we need to get additional bids, but the HVAC engineering. Maybe that's one that we pull here.
For next year or for the year?
For next, we just need to get bids on it, so it would be a next year. But thinking about that as, as something that we do or at least a portion of it to improve basement ventilation. You know, interim steps until we, until there's a larger project planned, because there's, there's just immediate, there's really a big need for air quality improvement.
Rough number to take out of fund balance for that.
I would have to go back and look at the, we have one bid on it, then it would give us a ballpark, I don't remember in my head, but look it up.
Sixty two hundred, I think.
Of course you remember it, of course. Their superpower.
Among them. Printing and mailing, same thing, so there's always going to be some items, you know, like supplies for the stamps from the battery here and the stamps program. But again, you're out of there, go back and reallocate this, the departments. I think you're probably not finding that huge, that's in mind. Unallocated insurance, so this is liability insurance. Estimated at a ten percent over actuals, I have reached out to Karen, Karen's regiment nimer, they don't have the figure yet. This can go up or down.
So you're going to want unallocated insurance?
Liability, general liability insurance. Another rainy day project is changing some of the names on the accounts. But not the top of my list. I think last year we ended up at eight percent, but there's got to be changes, the members sent some emails about changes to some of the policies and the riders, so ten percent for now. Municipal dues, that's the NICOM Association. Municipal dues, that's the N I com association fees, hasn't changed in years. Judgments and claims, the state says we have to have, you know, this line out of in case of any judgments or settlements against the village.
Not written apart from our insurance?
Yes, so our insurance deductible is twenty-five hundred. So I have one deductible in here, in the past, it's been two deductibles, never really used two in the same year, so I dropped it down to one. Actually on property, um, same thing, so you'll see there's a year-to-date number, but had some house reimburse us for that. Uh, contingent account is exactly what it says, just a line for real emergency unforeseen expenses. Unpredictable, so this number changes based on balancing the budget rounding. Remember, it'll be a flat number, this is where, um, like right eight fifty-one.
Larry, it's the moment you've been waiting for.
I'm just going down my list before we get too far, and I wanna make sure we hit stuff in the appropriate departments. Okay. So police, police personal services. Um, so we see based on contractual, um, amounts. But to get to the police wages, I take all the officers and I average out their hourly rate. Uh, and then I assume that they all work the same amount of tours for the year, which is roughly seventy-three tours. At fifteen officers at an average rate, they come up with the base amount that we need to have. A patrol twenty-four seven, one person. And then there's things that need to go on top of that, so in the contract, there's four training days per officer. There's also an additional four, um, discretionary as needed. Um, the first four are mandatory, the next four are optional, um, but they're allowed to be used. Um, this year, there should be, um, radio training, uh, CAD training, new system, two new systems. Um, a third day would be critical response in the area, and then the fourth day, if needed, is still up in the air. Larry had requested, um, possible bike training, um, for two officers, five, five days for two officers, eight hours each. It took that out, it's a twenty-six hundred dollar number.
What is critical bike training?
Critical response, one item, CAD training is one, radios, and then bike training. So to have a bike patrol, um, that was a request, but it didn't make it into this draft for version of the budget.
That's what I saw.
We need bike here, then we also need bikes.
We have one that we refurbished about two years ago, uh, we'll probably have to refurbish it again. And on the last time we had the bike, it was actually donated by, I believe. Uh, a merchant or somebody in the village, I wasn't in charge at the time when, when the bike was, I believe, donated. Uh, but it's an older bike, we probably would have to either update or get it, get it, no one, or hopefully somebody can donate it.
And in order for an officer to use the bike, you're, I assume there's required training?
Yeah, there's, there's required training, it's five, it's, the minimum is four days, they want five before you actually get certified, and that's for safety. For all sorts of different, you know, terrain, stuff like that, using it in a defensive mode, uh, and just in general, and for insurance purposes.
And is it something that officers are interested in doing?
There's a few that were definitely interested in doing it, um, I think it gives a good look to the village, I know the, um, Putnam County Sheriff has, has a bike in it. Just, just something said it was, it's something else, we can put it in, spray it, yeah, I understand.
So you would have, you would have a, a bike patrol, when, when would you use this? We would, we're not gonna not have someone in a car.
On the, on the weekends, on, uh, community day, on, if you have anything that if you rent out mayor's park in any way, you can have that. Um, it's just getting an officer out of the car on the street that we're trying to really kinda up, up that more.
It'd be a second.
Correct.
Second officer, you couldn't have someone not.
Right.
In the car?
Yeah, okay. So you can see how it would be useful at, with make events.
Yep.
That is not.
That's not there now.
But like I said, we're gonna go through things that were requested and, um. With the addition of a prosecuting attorney for traffic court, um, there's less hours.
Officers would be coming to court.
Um, so that went down a little bit, um, but they would still need to be here because you need to have officers, right? Um, walking tours are included, um, assuming we filed that schedule for C Street. C Street is here for, um, nine weekends, I have that many walking for even here, plus a few extra. I have, you know, details for Halloween, for Memorial Day, Community Day parades in here. There's a couple administrative hours, um, for Lexi Paul. And the officer in charge as a whole. Then I built in the night diff differential, holiday pay, weekend stipends, and that's where I get the three sixty-three number. That's in the budget.
Okay.
Um, so the raises are contractual. The P B A contract does end in May of twenty-four. Um, next line is crossing guards, uh, hundred and eighty-five days are built into a school calendar, they work five hours, two percent. There's their number. Out parking enforcement, this is seventeen dollars an hour position, um, budgeted for. Sixteen hours a weekend for roughly forty weekends, one person. Um, this is, you know, there's been a request maybe to have two people. Um, it's filling the first position, but right now it's one person in the busy season.
Sorry, why is it higher than last year?
So last year it was, um, six hours a weekend. Um, six hours on a Saturday or Sunday, this year it's eight, the thought is that the parking meters are going for eight hours. And then in the past, it was only for summer and fall, this would include the spring too, to capture. Entire busy season.
Those sound like good expansions. Wish, I just wish that we could find one more, putting one more person on the street, writing tickets would be amazing. I mean, it feels like something that more than, essentially more than pays for, so.
It's just about finding people, right?
Is that more the issue, is it just I need somebody?
We were spoiled with, uh, with, uh, Nico DeWalt, cause he was here all the time on the weekends, he barely took off, uh, last year, we budgeted. The same amount, uh, he has moved on, um, we brought to stay in mouth for a new officer. And she came in a little bit less because she couldn't do every weekend, uh, she did, right, she did a great job, um, not saying that. I've reached out to her three times already, see if she's gonna come back, I've not gotten any responses whatsoever. Uh, my next step is to, which I've already have contacted the cadet program, so when I graduated from the cadet program, they're very familiar with, with policing. Uh, I'd rather have them, uh, than have to take somebody straight off the street and have to train them.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what, you know, my goal is anyway, um. We have to put a police officer out there, and so that's a higher expense, because more, you know, per hour, but that'll be up to you guys.
Are we trying to hire one or two?
I would like to have two, um, having trouble right now getting one, so.
And would two be for, um, rotating or having them both on at the same time?
Originally last year, I had three applicants, they, two of them decided not to do it, I was hoping to do a rotation. Uh, but if you wanted to put two on a certain amount of time, I, the busy season comes up, we see that the, the weekends are really getting crazy in August and September, we can, you know, that's where it'll fluctuate.
We're also gonna have to, they'll also have to enforce parking on residential streets, and that's a big deal, and I think a lot of walk, it's a lot of walking, it's a much. Just to say, like, I think people would be frustrated if we put in a system and people aren't, and there isn't.
There's no.
I mean, that's, that's the number. Is, is the, is the amount we have it set prohibitive for getting people? I mean, we're talking, we're talking about someone who is not an officer.
Right, correct, not, not law enforcement, would, would not have any, any arrest powers or anything like that, I, I, you talk about the stat per hour. I think that's a, a decent amount, um, you'd probably, if you raise it, you'd probably get some more applicants, but again, it's, it's hard enough even to get. Uh, a, a police, people want to be police officers nowadays or what's going on, because the people in the past, uh, last year and including the other. Uh, park enforcement were abused a couple of times, and you know, they had one, at one or two times, they didn't call for help, they have a radio, they carry it, but they told me. And it was a resident, and I went and I spoke to those people, but I mean, it's, you know, it, it, that comes with territory when you get a fifty-dollar ticket.
It's a, it's a really, it is a really hard job.
Yeah, oh, I don't.
Seventeen dollars an hour.
Seventeen, so maybe we can consider increasing it.
If that opens the pool a little bit, what would like a one dollar? Dude, I don't even know what you're thinking.
If, if you're thinking of it, uh, to get it, to get people come in, I would, I hate to say this, but it would be about twenty bucks an hour.
Twenty bucks is what I would expect. Feet all day long.
If it means to get.
That's for one person. Yes, correct. Most of the revenue, just to let you know, in the past year has come off of the municipal lot. Uh, and mayor's park, that's where most of the tickets, where people weren't feeding the meter, and that was a whole, think of all what she was getting on. The other, other times were, other tickets were inspection stickers, which, which they can write, they cannot write registration and, uh, but the officers do that.
Well, this is also one of those scenarios where you have to spend to earn.
Yeah.
Um.
Absolutely.
We're sunk if we don't get. Expected parking, that's right, so.
Thing that we're talking about, I think that's great, because then it, it, it stops any tickets being thrown out. Cause you're writing a ticket, you might miss a number or something like that, and then people complain and they, they fight the ticket with the handheld, it just takes the plate boom and you're done.
I'm shocked at the prices for those, shocked, I mean, we're gonna get to that, right?
They're not filled in right now.
Yeah.
If you go that route, I mean, just going down.
I mean, it's, it's not included, so if you want to talk about it now, we can.
Yeah, I mean, so I've gotten two votes in and one was like double the other. What happened to mommy right now, she brought the whole library, but, um. But roughly, they had their like, was it eight thousand dollars a piece? So. Enforcement device and ticket printer, it's three thousand four hundred per year for the data plan and, and like. The hardware functionality, and then the device each costs approximately five thousand two hundred each. To purchase and set up, so that's, that's the buy-in cost, which we can do with fund balance, right? And then we have to count for the.
Edge data.
The annual data, right?
So you know, that's not included, or that's still working or quotes?
That's the lowest quote I've gotten so far.
And is it possible, do you think that it's possible to accomplish the, the equipment person, purchase before June?
Absolutely, I have, um, I should have all like three bids in this week or by next week and. This one that I'm looking at, that's so far the lowest, is the same company that has the kiosk that you liked from Port.
Oh, Port Chester.
Port Chester, they love them, like, I talked to their clerk, um, said it worked really well. Um, and they package it and make it really easy. So that's where I'm, I'm hoping that their pricing comes in the best across the board, but I'll see when everything's in here, if I can really.
Just quick question on that, would, now that, would that transmit the, the ticket right to the court, right, would it be an attachment here to, to the clerk?
Yeah, yeah.
And it's a printout ticket?
It's a printout, it prints out, and the data goes instantly to the clerk and to the court, so.
We do, we do, we'll do some of it in the vehicles, we, same thing, you get a printout and then it automatically goes to Albany then to the clerk.
Right, yeah, no, it's, it's, and then there's all kinds of stats that you can play with, I'm sure officers will be thrilled with, but.
But who uses, is it the, is it the parking enforcement person who uses that, or is it?
I would both, I mean, if the, if the parking, uh, uh, enforcement doesn't come in, and I know we have one of the, hey, you're gonna do the ticket, you're gonna do the walk-in tour today for eight hours and. You're gonna go out there and do, and do the timing.
And we also, we always want our officers to have the capacity to issue parking tickets.
Yeah, these devices aren't just for parking, like, your officers could use them all week long on roadways issues too, you can put any. Problem, you know, any, any ticket you wanna issue in there.
So would that replace what Larry has now?
I'd have to look at, I'd have to look at the programming, if, if it does that, I guess it does specifics on that, where, where it has to go to Albany first, and then it comes down to the court here. I'm, I'm talking about move violations, we're not talking about regular parking searches.
I think the handheld would do like the same thing, like you said, a parking enforcement officer could only write. If you said it's, it's silent inspections, but not registration.
Correct.
I think the handheld device would follow similar.
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, and if, if you at any point wanna interview the options, I can connect you to them and set up meetings with them, don't answer any questions you have.
Okay.
Is it you are? It's thirty-four hundred a year for each.
So that, that was a question for you, Larry, is like, how many do you think realistically what we would need? You know, if we're talking about one. Um, parking enforcement officer on it all, you know, at certain times. Do we want to?
Then it might be two to get the best book out about, you know, what if one, you know, breaks down or something happens, you have, you have a backup, I would always wanna have at least one backup, if it's in the budget. If it's not, then we'll work with one, and then we'll go back to hand, handwritten tickets, you know, for that, that period of time until it gets fixed.
They do have, you know, like warranties and insurance options where you can pay, which. Um, like on the fence about, but if, if anything happens, they'll send you a backup within twelve hours and you'll have something to work with immediately.
Yeah, cause I mean, we're all human, it got, you know, accidentally dropped or something happens, we, you know, what hap, and it breaks and.
So protective cases.
Okay.
Is there something that the board wants to build into the annual budget?
Well, um, I was just thinking about Laura's question. Six thousand is a lot for, for data for two, and it does seem smart to have two. So that officers have one in the, in the car and the parking person has one on the weekends. But if we had to do one, you could have the officers carry it during the week and the parking enforcement person carry it on the weekend. Um, and that wouldn't preclude officers from writing handwritten tickets on the weekends. So if we, if we needed to start small and build our revenue base, we could, we could do with just one, but I would, obviously, I think we'd all prefer two, six thousand is a lot.
It's, it's a way to test it, right, I mean, it sounds like you, you're getting good feedback about it, but if we wanted to see how much, how, how important it is. Start with one and then buy the second one.
Well, yeah, and it kind of goes back to how many enforcement officers do we want to?
Well, I can, yeah, can we get?
But I, I mean, I think that if you pay them twenty bucks an hour, you're gonna have more.
And it does take, it takes a lot less just to click a plate or click a registration sticker, a, a ticket, then I sit there and have to write it.
Right, they're gonna be more.
You're gonna get so many more.
It integrates a part mobile, so it's gonna tell you on it if the, if the time has expired, and then you hit print, so it's. It's not going to service and then having the electronic, it's all in one. Yeah, we eat, right, so.
I just, I'm nervous to not, I'm nervous to not have one.
Yeah, no, I think we have to have one.
And then we wanna up the, the hourly, build that in.
Try it.
Lost our entire audience.
No.
Mike's, oh no, Mike's always with us, he's one of us, we don't count him as somebody else. Okay.
Police equipment, um, miscellaneous stuff. Try and rotate, um, rest a couple of years.
And expire too, right, you have to.
Vehicle repairs, uh, drop it down a thousand to eight thousand.
And is that based on, now that we've got a better tracking system for what our repairs have been, what the needs have been? Right, the fleet management, the newer. But the fleet management has been better too.
So talking about cars, um, there is no vehicle payment for the police department bills into the. Um, there was a request to replace the Tahoe. It's a, it's, you're looking at seventy, seventy-five thousand to replace it. Um, on state contracts outfitted, but that's out the door, computer, everything that you need. So that payment's not built into this budget, um. In the past, it's been, you know, fifteen, sixteen thousand for a police vehicle over three years, um. The last explorer, we were, uh, one of them, we were able to pay outright, the other one, we did finance. The charger is new because of insurance.
Right.
We paid the balance outright. That's another option to pay for the truck outright out of fund balance if the board wants to purchase a new one.
At one point, you were talking about trying to get. To move this forward, to do one payment in this budget cycle, and then two payments, budget going forward for the, for the balance.
So in this iteration, in this draft, that payment is not there.
Okay. But we're trying to get to a point, I think, the goal is to get to a point where we have a planned replacement, we have a plan. But we're trying to get to a point, I think the goal is to get to a point where we have a planned replacement, we have a planned planned fleet update. So no vehicles with us more than X number of years, right?
And for a while, there was a fifteen thousand dollar, um. Amount built into the police department for that payment. Um, it came off last year because we paid a vehicle outright and then the introduction of the body cameras. Um, you know, if you really wanna think about it, two fifteen thousand is trying to kiss, you know, so there's some trade-offs.
Yeah, um. How?
Right now.
So it's on on your desired list, but not the, it's been pulled at this point from a must-have, yep.
I would, uh. If Larry says it was pulled for must-have, I couldn't fit it in. Um, I just couldn't do it, so I pulled that one and that's why we're here discussing these things.
That question to me.
Actually, it was, but I thought you.
Priority on the wishlist that solves the fitting it in, um. But, you know, there are some things I don't like to make decisions, but sometimes. Just I can't make.
Make it work.
I can't make it work.
Can you say again how much it would be added this year?
The price of the vehicle is seventy to seventy-five thousand. So it's however we wanted to slice it, you know, we had thought about maybe trying to pay half of it down payment this year, and then that would have, you know. Fifteen thousand or, you know, twelve thousand dollar payments in subsequent years, like for front load, the upfitting and the computers and stuff this year. Um.
But we felt for that exploding rapidly at this point.
Where are we on the cycle of replacement, like? Should we be replacing something now or?
Basically, what we have now is the oldest vehicle, I try to go, uh, go by the oldest vehicle and one I know I think is gonna break down. More often, which is the Tahoe, the Tahoe is two thousand and fourteen, uh, it's got eighty thousand miles on it, um. It's it's still holding together, but if we go any further with it, I I could see more and more repairs coming through. Also, with that being said, the new CAD system coming in in December is gonna start off with with the county. It doesn't, the computer it's in it now is an older computer and an older printer, like everything is old at this point, because it's it's almost eight. Figured fourteen, it's almost seven, seven years going now, everything has to be replaced, that's why the amount is so high. I don't like, I I hear the number and I I cringe, to be honest with you. Um, but we do need one vehicle, that's a a big vehicle, it's less size of Tahoe, because we do get lower main that gets flooded. And the Explorer will not be able to go down there, it will flood, so, um, that's the reason I would like to always have one.
So you're milking the one we have and hoping for the best.
That's what we're doing, um, and again, the computer system is 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 way behind and with the new system coming up, we're gonna need GPS. So the CAD system is gonna, once all the computers have the GPS in them for the vehicles. When it goes, new CAD system pops up, the screen's gonna pop up, it's gonna show all my vehicles, all of all the Putnam County Sheriff's vehicles that are on this side of the county. So if we're gonna respond to an, uh, say a domestic violence, unfortunately, officer needs backup. They can see exactly where we are for safety purposes, we can't do that with the computers that we have now. Uh, so when you replace them, you gotta replace the dock, you gotta replace the computer, you gotta replace all that, so.
So that makes me think. If if we still have the Tahoe. And we're paying to upgrade within that vehicle, I assume that when we, if we were to do that, upgrade within the Tahoe, everything that. In terms of computer would come out and go in a new vehicle?
I would hope so, depending how long the vehicle, depending how long you would wait to get a new vehicle. And so if you upgrade a tower, it's gonna cost you still, what do you think, Michelle, between five and seven thousand with all new stuff in it, computer, the the laptop, if they wanna go go that route?
The computers, yeah, that doesn't include the lights and other police, this is just the computer, so. You know, you can look at the police vehicle in three components, you have the vehicle itself, you have the upfitting, which is. You know, all the police equipment, you know, the reconfiguring seats, the lights and all that stuff. And then you have the IT component, which is the computer, there's a dock, there's a printer, there's a lot that goes into the computer and that's why we separated it out. And that doesn't come from the vendor that does the lights and the seating and all that, that comes from that.
So the IT component is transferable to a new vehicle if it's on the same level as the equipment.
Certain amount of timeframe, because like right now, in the in the, I believe in the old Charger, I can take out the, what we call a hardwire, which is the modem. I think, and when I talk to Andy about this, take that one out, maybe save that, be able to put that into a new vehicle, so that'll save us some more money, so it has a constant internet. Um, and the antenna, and it saves it saves some money, that's what we try to do, uh, if it if it all, if it all works and it all comes together that way, that's good. Good.
Do we have a cost on the IT component?
Uh, right now, for the modem, I, you know better than I.
IT, so buying a laptop, buying a dock, the modem, like, like you said, it's probably six or seven grand, there's a lot that goes into it. Um, and think about a car, you can have, depending on when they change the interior design of a car, it depends on. If that dock is still good.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm worrying about.
More rule of thumb, as much as Larry tries to pull stuff out of vehicles. It's really not that much that can be pulled out the way that we're replacing. The Charger was a little different because it was a perfect replacement in kind, but you know, you're looking at a Tahoe that's eight years old. Tahos have been redesigned, you need a new, and then the the dock that holds the laptop. That laptop, although they don't change as frequently as our common laptops, you know, if the laptop screen size changed, you need a whole new dock too.
So Larry, how often do you guys use the Tahoe? Is that something that's used in rotation weekly or is that like the backup vehicle?
Right now, I'm using it, I have the three main vehicles is the Charger and the two Explorers, and and the Tahoe now does get, it's starting to get a little more used than than it was. I was specifically kinda saving that as as an extra vehicle, because again, the gas price is a little heavier and stuff like that and, you know, and some. And I don't mean to say it say it this way, but some of the bigger officers, uh, you know, I try to do each vehicle on a specific tour, like you'll see the Charger on a day tour. And the Explorer, yes, tall and a bigger, to 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 fit in with the equipment, with everything else that has to be in the in the vehicle when you're when you're going on patrol. Um, so that's, you know, that's what we look, what to do with that. And in the past, we used to have a lot of vehicles go down for, you know, a few shifts here and there, and I try not to run a vehicle back to back, you don't want a vehicle running sixteen hours straight. So that, and again, with the snow and stuff we just had, the Tahoe was the perfect vehicle, not that the Explorer can't get through, but the bigger, the heavier the snow, the, you know, the more accumulations. You want the Tahoe out there, which we've had.
How are we with supply lines? Right now?
Right now, um, there was a bunch, I talked to a couple of, uh, dealers, again, it would have to go out to a state bid, so it'd have to go out to, we've done in the past. So depending on what, uh, dealer we would come in with a better price, right now, they are out there, um, not in abundance, but they are out there. Because the prices are a little high and everybody's trying to go to a smaller vehicle, um. Last vendor I did speak to, he said there was, he's got a few deals that still have them. And we have to be on specifics, I wanna keep it with the black and white, uh, can't get red one, can't get a regular white one, that's something I I wanna, I would like to stay with. Um, so it all depends if the availability is there.
Anything like surplus out there?
Surplus as in?
Surplus vehicle from a department that, I don't know, downsized or?
And any of the vehicles that are out there, I'm on, I'm on Muti bid, which is a, which is a a company that actually does auctions for all police vehicles. Nobody has anything out there that's worth buying, you might as well just keep what you have. Because all the vehicles there are like sixteen, seventeen, two thousand, sixteen, seventeen, hundred thousand miles, hundred fifty thousand miles.
And, and, okay, so if it's seventy-five thousand. What is the least amount of money we could spend per cycle to say yes to this? Like, you know, you took some this year.
Usually, our financing is three years, it would be up to the bank to do that. Um, so the the highway dump truck is on a six-year cycle. But that was also two hundred thousand, so they're more likely to extend, but typically. Regular pickup trucks and police vehicles have been on a three-year, um, lease or finance cycle.
Let's just go back to what I was saying before, if we have the inclement weather, the Charger cannot go up and down the street, it'll be going sideways. So that's why we we probably really kinda use it for for those social reasons.
So that's still something like thirty thousand a year.
You're gonna have to deal with probably another seven, seven to eight years, just, I, you know, I'm I'm not trying to sell itself, but I I kinda am.
Well, I mean, I think. Part of it, part of it too is that we. We do need to think long-term. Also, right, and and thinking about. Fleet replacement, and we had a pile of junk for a chunk of years, um, and we need reliable vehicles. So. I don't know, I mean, if you're if you're saying, Michelle, you can't fit it in, the only the only thing, would this be considered a one-time? Like, could we take more of it out of this year's general?
If we, if we were gonna pay for it, um. We could do it this year, next year at a fund balance, if we wanted to fit in some kind of payments. You know, this is a draft, we have to increase revenue somehow, decrease expenses somehow, um. The first decision is, this is something we want to move forward, the board wants to move forward with.
And I think we have to kind of consider the highway department needs the truck that that works for wastewater and highway and. Sort of a similar situation where it's a. Super high utility vehicle that is necessary.
That might be changing.
Small, you know, like in specific times when they're hauling the heaviest equipment that we have, but there's nothing else to do it safely. And it's similar, like, there's no other vehicle that can do what the Tahoe does safely.
To be fair, highways, additional requesting vehicles not included in this draft.
I don't think we're at a. Yeah, it stays in the mix, and we, we understand that.
Put it up there.
Important, the super wishlist.
Yeah.
Um, services and materials, um, this includes, you know, four thousand dollars for the Lexi Bowl service for the policy. Um, amongst other like little things, um, the scheduling software, postage, ink, the log books. Um, ammo's in the line. Gas, uh, three dollars seventy-five cents, sorry, can I ask?
Oh, you're not down there yet.
Uh, telephone and radio, so. Um, this includes internet in the cars too, so in this line, you have. Um, the internet in all the cars, you have the officer's cell phone, on-duty cell phone. Um. You have the current radio lease for six months of the year, and then you have projected numbers for switching to the county upgraded system. You know, it sounds like those numbers are ever-changing.
Um, yeah, um, I'm I'm really, I am quite concerned about the numbers we heard today, um. So we'll we'll try to get clarification ASAP.
There is some kind of installation in fifty thousand a month for all the radios for half the year. Um, so when we have clarification from the county, um, it sounds like this line would have to go up a little bit. Cool and supplies, um, could be like some miscellaneous training things, um. Of course. You know, stuff for the range and things like that, uh, computer support. You know, this includes monthly maintenance fees on all the laptops, um, plus the fees, um. You know, some of the locational cameras and some miscellaneous hours for stuff that wouldn't be covered under the contract, rare, but happens once in a while.
So, which line is that?
Police computer support.
And is that, does that include hours for for Karen, for inputting? Lexicale stuff, Lexicale updates?
I did not increase Karen's hours, Karen's budgeted, I believe, at twenty or twenty-one hours a week. And I have her hours split between shirt services, zoning, planning, and HDRB. Um, so if she needs to work more, we'd have to up the shirt services line. Or if some work that she would typically do in Village Hall. Um, if she didn't work on Village Hall on that Tuesday and worked on Lexicale stuff, then that money's already there. But if it's an increase for the time she'd be working for the village.
About that some more, in terms of how that her time gets managed.
Technology, uh, sixty-three hundred, this would be for the second year of the body cameras. Um, I don't think the board has officially voted to move forward with body cameras, um, but we have the grant. Um. And if we use the grant and then take the five-year plan as quoted, it's would be sixty-three hundred in the second year.
So we need to have, you know, get that on a an agenda for discussion for doing. Taking the first portion out of this year.
For the fourteen thousand for the grant, you know, plus, we could even pay the first year. Out of this year too, so fourteen thousand plus the first year of the contract, so. You know, instead of doing the fourteen thousand down payment, maybe an eighteen or eighteen thousand down payment. In that five-year plan, it's the price of the equipment, which is paying for the grant, the grant pays for the equipment. Piece of it and the first year of the subscription, um, and then there was the storage and subscription. Police clothing allowance, which is all contractual, um.
We still have, there's a couple of people who aren't actually here anymore.
There's a couple of people that are still employed by the village, so everybody not here. Parking enforcement clothing, there's no discussion. Um, I updated a little bit because if you were going to have two people rotating. Um, you know, we spent two sixty on one person last year. Traffic controls, control street sign equipment, uh, hopefully the bulk of the purchases for the parking signs. Would be purchased this year, but it sounds like some of the residential parking permits signed would be purchased next year, so it's twenty-five hundred.
We're always, there are always gonna be sign needs.
In the past, this might have been used for like the barriers or miscellaneous or cones. Fire department, gasoline, oil, heating, diesel, um, the siren is electricity for the siren, plus some of their service contracts for. Um, building, monitoring, and and fire alarms.
So is the repairs line? Obviously, it's separate and apart from the larger village facilities line.
And so that four thousand would be for like small miscellaneous stuff.
Okay.
Um, their toilet breaks. Um, you know, maybe that's something that that comes out and maybe that goes to fund balance, because it's all gonna be bigger stuff at the fire department.
We have, we have Will coming, Angela Lo from HAN to look at. Um, potential for helping bid some of those big, big projects, we'll have a better sense of that.
Uh, the service award is the fees to have the low-stem program. Fire protection services is the amount that the fire company requests to be able to provide fire protection services to the. Two villages and the portion of Phillips Town, uh, this includes a four percent increase built-in. Um, control animals, we were paying for pest control at Firehouse, but they decided that they don't need that. Uh, building inspector, assuming that the contractual amount, um, with the town stays the same. Be nineteen thousand two hundred, based on what they built this last year, but you know, I don't.
Know how we estimate. I don't know how we estimate. I mean, I guess we'd say a number of inspections for short-term rental, once that gets rolling, right? We need to figure that in.
Are they proposing to charges for inspection?
We haven't had a conversation yet.
Our registrar.
I mean, that's how, that's how I imagined it going, was that we look at the per inspection for that initial inspection. Separated and apart from from violations.
Well, but we don't have anything for us for SDRs in the revenue center, so if we include it. Here. On the expensive.
Right, we need to balance it on the other side.
Registrar, uh, stipend for being a registrar, plus for its safety paper to be able to print the stuff. Um, public health other, this was the hub, one-time, five-thousand contract, but I haven't heard that it was being renewed, so I have a zero there right now.
We still have funds that we're working through, we haven't used it all yet.
Highway Department. Personal Services. To get the, to get to the Highway Department Personal Services, um. You have to combine the Highway Department, um, the Highway Street Maintenance Line, Snow Removal, Sidewalk, Storm Dreams, used to be Garbage. And, um. Recreation and street cleaning, so if you lump all those. Individual lines together, you get the total salaries for the Highway Department, um, state request that it be broken out like this, um. Who, the Highway Street Maintenance Line ends up being the catch-all, um, so if they do. More street cleaning, the street cleaning line will be increased, and then this line will be decreased, and that's why there's budget.
I was just gonna say, kinda interrupt Michelle to tell Larry, you're welcome to say as you'd like, but if you.
There's no questions, I I can answer, I'm good.
Appreciate it. Good night. We were, I was saying it too, without to say it. Okay, sorry, Michelle.
So highway altogether, uh, highway has requested. The highway currently is three full-time employees and one part-time employee. Howie has requested to continue um, the grass cutter, um, to add in a summer help kid. Which we've consistently had, but it wasn't budgeted for last year, but we were able to do it anyway. Um, and two full-time employees. Those are the highway department's requests. Built into this budget is the grass cutting person and a summer help person. It didn't fit in a full-time employee here.
Even with, even with the potential of sharing with water and wastewater.
So if we were to share, um, with water and wastewater, we'd have to come up with a percentage. So if it was sixty percent highway, rough numbers, four and then twenty water and twenty sewer, they're still looking at adding in. Forty-seven thousand into the general fund. You know, um, an entry level labor at eighteen dollars an hour, vacation pay and insurance, FICA, everything without any overtime, really can have like seventy-five thousand. Seventy-eight thousand in pension on one year. So sixty percent in the general fund is forty-seven thousand dollars. So that is not.
Doesn't bing to this, but we keep coming back to the same place every year where we've got all this fund balance left from the year before that hasn't been used. And all these projects didn't get finished because we don't have people to do them.
I think we need to be, I think we need to be, um, bidding stuff out more. Because the, 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 it's the health, it's health insurance that kills us. Um, and these are the, the highway jobs, the high, the tasks that need doing, that aren't getting done, are things that can be contracted. Um, and they don't have the same long-term impact on the budget.
So do we take things like the, um, catch base and repairs of the highway department and keep them doing all the like busy work that they do all like season, because they have like sort of a rotation of like putting benches out and push some stuff quick. Right, doing that, like flushing sewers. Right, all of those things that they should be doing and they aren't getting to often. So we're taking, we're, we're sort of talking about shifting the approach and saying, you guys do that stuff. And we're going to have these big projects done by contractors. But then where do you budget that? Is that then fund balance? How does that work?
We'll take that as a going because fund balance is high enough right now. Um, I don't know, long-term, we've never really looked at it. But to spend down some fund balance, contracting out our one-time project. If you did it, you know, two or three catch basins isn't gonna, you know, be gonna contract it out. Focus on catch basins, do one big village-wide catch basin project and then like that. That's where it makes sense to pay for the engineer, because you're gonna pay the same price if you bid a thirty-five thousand dollar project, or if you bid a fifty, eighty thousand dollar project. It, it's the hours to write the bid.
Right, and it's so much, so much more efficient, and maybe you get better, a better bid, better, you know.
Lumpding stuff together, so a couple sidewalks, a couple storm rooms, something that a co- one contractor could do, but it hits a little bit of the task. On one or two bids with alternate scenarios.
I think, I think it's smart and I think it's where, it's where we are and we, we need to think longer term about the direction we go with the department, but I don't see how we build in, I don't see how we build in additional full-time folks and give the healthcare that we, that they, that they deserve.
Or we have to change the percentage of contribution and that's handled and.
Right.
A bunch of other stuff.
Well.
Well, we don't pay them enough to do that. They're not an amazing, it's not an amazing salary, anyone in the highway department's getting.
It seems as if it's, it's, it's a struggle to do, but there's so much, there's so much day-to-day. It's a struggle to get to, it seems to be a struggle getting to the, getting the bids out. Getting, getting contractors lined up, getting it done, and then getting the project done, um.
For the highway department.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like it's, right.
I mean, I feel like we have that problem too, and, and, you know.
Well, yeah, and Bugsy's trying to do that and keep up with all of the things that, all the things that he needs to do on a daily basis with three people. What, there was discussion about, there was discussion about grass cutting. And seeing about bidding that to a local contractor, that piece.
I don't think Bugsy talked about it.
He did not bring that up.
Well, he did it a couple of, we got some, a couple of years ago.
It's expensive, yeah, I would imagine.
Yeah, we had, do we have any, we've always, we've had Jack for quite some time. There's a possibility we won't have Jack going forward. How, has it been difficult in other years to get people to do that job for the summer? This, it doesn't, so the summer help kid doesn't encompass in this scenario, this, the summer help doesn't encompass, um, grass cutting, right?
In this scenario, the only thing that Jack is budgeted for is any grass cutting that needs to be done on the zero turn, ride on mower. No weed whacking, no push, nothing like that, so with this.
Does the rest, and, and fills in because Jack's only a limited amount of time, so if Jack doesn't get all the grass cut, the summer help fills in.
I mean, we're not likely to have Jack next year.
We won't have to.
So then the summer help, help would probably be doing both, I mean. But what are we talking about here? We, you've budgeted in one part-time grass cutter and one summer help, so.
Have summer help and Jack, knowing that Jack doesn't cut all the grass.
Right.
So it's like eight hours for Jack. And it, you'll end up seeing it in the rec line, but talking about highway department salaries as a whole, yep. Three full-time, Jack doing just minor grass cutting, and then a summer help kid forty hours a week for fourteen weeks, you know, May to July.
Kind of small, but some of the grass is in water and wastewater, so would this person do that?
You'd have to speak to Bugsy and Matt about that.
What, you're thinking of that, that parcel? Well, I just remember, no, I just remember Matt talking about that, that there was, you know, always kind of a discussion of pulling somebody from highway to blow the grass. Maybe there's a way that some of the, some of the wages are covered, chipped in from water and wastewater to blow the grass.
So small.
It's, it's only around, it's only around the plants.
Can you do summer help? When, when does Jack work? What, what, same months, three months?
That's when the grass needs to be cut in.
Yeah, it starts early, I mean, you know, you start.
You know, the other thought too is, you know, the, how they've been doing Mayor's Park, you know, for a little bit of the time during the baseball season. So it's not all of Mayor's Park, I don't believe, it's just the field side. It sounds like, um, if the board's not moving forward with adding a full-time person, if we need to help some part-time hours or something, we might be able to fit that in, um, but it would come back to a conversation on. If the board should not to add in a full-time person, then someone to have the conversation with the department. What else would you might be requesting if this request, if the full time can't happen? And then we could work from there and see if there's some kind of middle ground.
I, I just, um, I think that, yeah, that that's a bigger conversation with the highway department. Like on how, what, what their responsibilities are and like a realistic like calendar of what, what the cycles are of the basic maintenance. Like if they are becoming more like a maintenance department, and we're bidding out all the big projects. Which is what it sounds like we're moving to.
I mean, that's what I'm suggesting, I don't, I hadn't, how do others?
But, you know, I, I was, I, I was in support of adding another person just because the idea of building out the highway department. If, if, if we are indeed considering a consolidation plan with Phillips Town. Having a staff that's more solid and ready and already experienced in the village to integrate with their teams, and then they'll have more management, but we'll have people who know the village, who are allocated to the village. That was my hope, was to build off the team.
I mean, it's an ideal scenario. Something else is gonna have to, would have to go. So, um, what happened in the, the garbage is taken off the plate of this department? And then how did that affect their the work that they were? They got a chunk more done, but, but the, the reality is that there's a lot of deferred stuff, like years and years and years worth of.
They were on the roof like cleaning gutters and things that hadn't been done in like a decade or something.
I mean, it wasn't quite that bad, but it was. So between facilities, you know, them doing the repairs they could. Um, and they did replace a number of sidewalks last year, but some of the, some of the, some of the things, we don't have the equipment to do. I mean, we, we entered into an agreement with Kent to get an excavator, we don't have an excavator.
Keep moving the budget forward, it might be, if the board wants to keep talking about the structure of the highway department, another workshop.
Yeah, I think. It is almost that dirty.
I want to finish this, we're almost there. But these are, you know, the questions, they came up two weeks ago and we, we were talking about the same stuff. Um, so if we want to be looking, but it forward, I think it needs a separate.
Yeah.
Yep.
Conversation.
Good question. Because there's so much deferred, I mean, is there some timeframe for catching up? And then you wouldn't need that extra person? Or does the catching up get done by contracting it out? And then the department is able to manage, because there is this calendar and cycle of things that we do on an.
Well, let's, let's save that for the discussion, we could go on about this all night long honestly, and.
Yeah, we need a little more insight. Well, and we, yeah, we also, it'd be good to have, bring in some of the information from HAN too.
Yeah, they can meet with Bugsy and really get a better sense of what his year looks like, like those cycles of work, things that are just basic maintenance that have to happen every year, like I would love to have that list and that, that timeline of a year.
Yeah.
Equipment, thirty-eight thousand is the next payment on the dump truck, three thousand's for miscellaneous stuff. Reserving, it's all chipped, except for four thousand is for fund balance paving, small, um, like patches or pieces that Bugsy's requesting, and a thousand dollars in cold patch for the potholes. Supplying materials, um, ten thousand, this is, you know, the everyday stuff that highway department needs, whether it be a tool, some item four, paint, it could be anything. Some, so these numbers are put together with input from Bugsy's request for the highway department. Um, gas, oil, and diesel, electric, like there are, they're all trended. Um, equipment repair, Bugsy has requested to reduce the equipment repair line. Um, it was eight thousand, it was really high two years ago because of garbage. Um, twelve thousand this year, we're at seven thousand so far spent, and there's a lot of work done to the backhoe. So that Mo and Kyle have been working on a lot of the small machine equipment, um, motors. So he doesn't foresee any large equipment repairs next year, but you're still gonna have maintenance on the trucks and whatever. Office supplies, you know, paper and pens. Uh, education, he wants to go back to highway school, um, so that's the seven fifty, that was about seven hundred this year. Um, he has requested maybe some additional mechanics training for employees, but he needs more information to be able to put a real proposal before the board, so that's not included. Uh, telephone, it's the office phone, the internet and a cellphone, um, that he requested, um, that he doesn't currently have. I think they didn't want to carry two phones, so then we can get rid of the forty-five dollars a month.
So now we're asking for a phone again?
Um, it goes back and forth. I can confirm with him if he doesn't want one, that's forty-five.
I, I, we've gotten conflicting messages on.
Computer supports, contractual, safety equipment, um, gloves, glasses. Contractual clothing and eye allowance, they're in the same line, the clothing is three hundred per employee in the highway water and sewer department. Eye care for all the full-time village employees is two hundred and fifty. Bugsy was requesting to have the board consider combining them, the two lines. Um, don't know if you can, um, but so that each employee in the highway department would have a five fifty allowance, and they can spend it on all clothes, or they can spend it on all eye care. It's a handbook question.
Handbook would have to be adjusted to do that.
Yeah, the reasoning behind that was the younger guys don't need eye care as much as the older guys do, and um, the younger guys don't have clothes that are appropriate for like heavy-duty work and weather. So they need more funds for clothing, the older staff need more funds for glasses.
Seems reasonable.
Yeah.
Our employee handbook reads right now is that full-time employees are, um, get two hundred and fifty dollars per year for eyewear, and the highway department gets three hundred or whatever the number is.
So it's, it's called out specifically, you know, another thought is, we just off the highway.
Yeah.
So clothing a little bit, um, things like that, but it's all in the handbook right now, so little pain has already illustrated. Um, snow removal, personal services, so this includes overtime for storms, double time for some storms. Don't know how to predict storms, um, but it's eighty hours of overtime for snow and twenty hours of double time per each full-time employee. Equipment, some repairs, um, for the sander, things like that, contractual. Uh, a couple of years ago, we had brought in, uh, contractors to help with snow removal.
Right.
It was used, um, heavily, I think one year, maybe two, since then it hasn't been used as much. Bugsy's requesting to go down to eight thousand.
Seven hundred big snow, but who knows?
Right. Uh, streetlights, those are all, um, friends. Sidewalks, um, Bugsy requested that twelve thousand for maintenance and repair to go down a little bit from the year before because he wants to do that whole twelve thousand in-house instead of contracting it out, a fifteen thousand number would have included some in-house and some contracted out.
Sorry, say again what that is? General sidewalk repair or specific places or what?
General, I know, he has lists of places that he wants to do, um, so.
There's all, there are also ones he wants to bid.
Which HAN is looking at tomorrow.
Yeah, and the first twelve thousand is for the.
It's for the personal services.
And then the second is for equipment, for materials.
And then where would, oh, no, this, I'm sorry, what they're looking at is potential for this.
Off-street parking, these fees, this is just twelve percent of any revenue that we bring in, it's such a direct correlation, so if we up that three fifty to four dollars, then this will automatically add another twelve percent on the change. Parks and rec, um, this is, these numbers have been aside from personal service and electric, they have been requested from the rec commission. The, he originally requested fourteen thousand for the courts, and then the board voted to do it this year, so he put in forty-five hundred for the remainder, um, to do some other small repairs, um. I have had questions about the lawn care from rec, um, so we're not doing the villages and using true green or whoever it was to spray, um, but is there an organic?
And I asked Jeff to help, sorry, my eyes are cheap, I asked Jeff to help get bids on that.
Okay.
Um, and I need to follow up with them.
So the two thousand is just what it's been in the past, based on like, uh, I don't think it was true green, JP McHale, their pricing.
But JP McHale has other products in their line that may, we can't not, we can't not, we can't not do. Um, obviously, we don't want to be spraying where we don't have to, but, um, the, the, the riprap on the dock was was a mess last year, and then Bugsy flamed it.
Well, that's actually. That's actually what all of the ecological gardeners say is the best choice. For something like that, where you're not trying to protect the grass or something. Like load torching it is like not dumping chemicals in the river.
It was very effective.
And it was probably fun.
Is that always a line? Does it change the fact that the maintenance regime is different there? Can you say that again? I'm just adding up the doc side personal services. So now that it's the kind of natural landscape and I know they're gonna get training on doing it. Is there any? They still have to do it. Does it take the same? I'm just.
Is it like mowing? What is it?
It's primarily mowing. They're supposed to be trained by.
I have two hours a week for one guy.
It's not like it's a lot. In theory, it is supposed to be a shoreline that sustains itself with low maintenance. We, we are, we have been presented with grass cutting as the continuing maintenance. But.
Basically the same as the.
Potentially. Um I think we, we need to have better guidance on when they want rack actually cleared. And when they don't and when we're allowed to clear it and when we're not. Um obviously, this big storm was huge, but the ground was soft, so they asked us not to pull it. Um but then it comes, you know, in department heads last week, Bugsy said, I need to know what I'm allowed to pull and what I'm not.
Yeah.
So we need to, we need to work on that guidance more.
Doc side is called out separately, um for the agreement of New York State, the doc side have, have its own expenses.
Thanks.
Christmas lights, um you know, rec's not asking. They're asking for just five hundred here and there. And then, you know, they'll reallocate and ask for budget transfers if there's something larger that they wanna purchase. Um HGRB, this is um Karen's uh hours um there.
I don't see any training for any of the boards and we're required to.
It'd be in the contractual line. So I've reached out to all the boards and they've all said that they take it online as it comes up. You know, through nine five or whatever. It's usually twenty five dollars. Uh course.
Make sure they're doing it.
Yeah, four, four courses, a person a hundred bucks, five standing board, five hundred dollars.
Okay.
Um HTRB has asked for a little bit more for some printing of the final design standards, which they told me will be done by May thirty first. Celebrations, um parade contributions um there. Uh zoning board again, Karen.
So, so what is the, what is the big drop off on celebrations?
Uh there's no senior picnic. There's no staff appreciation day, anything like that. There hasn't been, so I would.
But what about the community day?
Community day mostly donated to. We paid, we were paying. Yeah, hey, pay the bills with the donated fund.
Yeah. You're like, why didn't you ask me that in September? Sorry, we're all tired.
Yeah. Zoning, um contractual, so. Zoning update committee, that's a three thousand dollars from fund balance for Ted Fink. If there's gonna be more, we can up it. Um I just, I don't know. Hopefully, it's because chapter one fifty four needs to be done yesterday that Ted Fink don't really go into next year.
Even ahead.
Yeah, we know.
August June thirtieth, it canceled into one month.
The PBMR.
There may be things other than one thirty four. In the future that might, you know, I understand what you're saying, but there, there may be other things that it would be useful to have a, a little bit of. Time with a, with a professional planner.
Uh garbage, okay, we're two pages left. Garbage Royals contract plus three percent. Plus all the add-ons, so add-ons from people that are paying for the extra carts. Um this includes four thousand dollars for an additional pickup for four months of Saturdays. Um it has the bulk payment in there. Um so it goes from two eighteen to two fifty nine. Largely in part, almost eighteen thousand of that is add-on services. Then you have to take the whole amount up at three percent.
Add-on services, meaning additional people who have asked.
Um plus the four thousand, plus Royals charging us uh three and a half percent fuel charge. Um so three and a half on every single bill that they send us. Um since uh.
So.
So.
It was not in the contract. Price, maybe a negotiating point. On adding another day, I don't know. I do think it should be best for sure. That's a lot.
This is a perfect thing when you talk to, whether it's the county, the state. Joy Trail, this is a direct impact on the village.
Yeah.
Having to do the Saturday and Sunday pickups and what that costs is and over the course of the year when we're talking, you know.
It's a thousand dollars a month per day. So a thousand or Saturday and a thousand on Sunday for a month, so two thousand if you need it.
My feeling is, yes, we need to secure those funds from them. And it needs to be in the budget because we can't not have garbage pickup. It's just too disgusting on Saturday.
No, I think it's.
It's a public health issue. Yeah.
Hard numbers you can actually give them.
For sure, but I, you know, I don't, I don't think we can pretend anymore that it's not an issue on the way. We not pretend, but we can't ignore it.
Yeah.
On Saturdays and it, right now, it's on the shoulders of residents. It should not be.
Right, tree cleaning, personal services is lumped in with all the highway, personal services. Community beautification, um this is flags, some bench repairs, planters, flowers, um small items. Storm dreams, tree fits, um personal services. It's contractual and supply. So this eleven thousand here contractual, contractual would be thought to be the ones contracted out. And six thousand would be supplies for highway to do them in-house. That whole eleven thousand right now is coming out of fund balance. I had to move some things, you know, to get us where we are. Tree removal, tree maintenance, tree replacement.
These are one time, they're one time expenses.
You can argue them either way. Um the bad ones that need to repair are like a one time, like full on replacement. But you know, maintenance and just, you know, some patchwork and, you know, a new grate here and there, that's reoccurring maintenance.
For sure.
Ones that need to be fully taken out, dug down, rebuilt up. Replacement instead of repair, I guess we could say.
It makes me, it makes me nervous to be pulling from. Fund balance for that.
Uh it's me too, but we did it last year, so I continue to. It's not ideal. I, if anything, I would do half and half, like contractual for the fund balance, cause it's for an actual vendor. And six thousand would be in the regular reoccurring stuff.
We just need more revenue.
Need more revenue. It's gonna look very different next year.
The tree board is requesting the same amount from last year, which was in at least ten years before. And they're usually pretty good about, um a lot of their work is removal and maintenance. Um but if for some reason that particular year, the replacement amounts were higher. Um Jen looks at it as a total amount, which I like to look at a lot of departments. You know, you try and budget line by line, but if you're gonna move stuff, it's like, oh, I don't need equipment repair, but I need more supplies. Same thing here. Urban forestry was a grant that we had a couple of years ago that we don't have anymore as a one time grant. Benefits page. State retirement, fire and police retirement, even New York State pension plans that the village participates in, all your employers do. Uh it's mandatory for full time employees, optional for part timers. Uh the pension is billed on a year lag. Um so these numbers, I estimate them based off where I think salary is gonna end. At May, um May of this year. So I have obviously salaries through February. Um when I did the calculation, it was through January, project them out to May. Add the percentage that the state is estimating will be for next year. I might come up with these numbers. Fireman's service award, that's low sap, that's a thirty two thousand. Ten flex is the actuarial company. They come in and they say what they think our contributions should be. They have it at like, uh, I think last year was twenty nine, thirty thousand, but then exponentially growing. So if we grow, we drop it down to thirty two, hang out there for a little bit and then we don't have to exponentially grow. Um it keeps a more level budget. Social Security and Medicare are directly tied to every single personal service line above. Um so security is point six two percent or six point two percent. Medicare is one point four five percent. Work as compensation for employees and fire, that was a two year deal, so these numbers are gonna be the exact same as last year. Unemployment insurance. It's a gamble. If there is unemployment insurance, sometimes seasonal um employees pile for it. The state has paid for unemployment insurance during COVID, so we don't exactly know.
Right.
It's gonna be filed again. Medical insurance. So this includes a new family plan for a new deputy village clerk. It also includes the incremental difference from going from a single plan to a family plan. And the reason for including that is because there have typically been turnover in the village staff over the past year. And it always flip flops between single and family plans. And if we don't budget for a family plan and someone on that single plan drops, that's a lot of thousands to try and fit back in.
Understood.
And this is after the fifteen percent has been accounted for that employees and retirees pay for. This includes the Medicare reimbursement payments that we have to make to retirees as well. Um it's all encompassing for the general fund. Dental insurance is contractual, uh not contractual, but in the employee handbook, five hundred for single, a thousand for a family. And then eyeglasses. And then we get through a balanced grass budget before anything that we discuss today.
Okay. Questions, comments, concern right now? I think we're in a tight spot. That's what I think.
Yeah.
Well, we were planning to look at it with different tax scenarios regardless.
Yeah.
This is where we started.
The max increase is another forty four thousand, so there is a cap on the max.
Yeah.
And we're already at higher than last year. We're at two point four percent. Last year, we were at one point nine five percent. So there's two percentages. There's a percentage on the overall revenue to the village and the percentage on what somebody would see on their tax bill from the tax rate the year before. So last year, the tax rate increase on a bill was one point nine five percent. Estimated because the tax rules aren't finalized, we're at a two point four percent increase from the tax rate the year before.
Right, and the last time we were together, you, you estimated what that would look like for sort of sample households. Um it's pretty, it's pretty clear that we. We would need, we need the short term rental income. We need to get the, we need to get that, the legislation passed so that we can, we have the capacity to collect. Right, we, we, we have been enabled to do it. We need to get in the books.
I, I, the STR revenue, although it'd be helpful, it's not going to be.
A ton.
The bulk of it comes from the hotels on occupancy tax.
Yeah.
The STR revenues, the permitting and then five percent.
It's so much work. It's gonna be more work. Yeah, it's gonna cost that.
So it, you know, because software for STR is already included, it would help a little bit, but it, it's not gonna make waves in the budget.
Not, not big one.
Having the hotel in there is like that.
Um we could also look at, you know, um that contract for Hudson houses. The, the lot that we leased to them, because if it were at market rate the same as forty, forty Main Street. Like they would be paying another twenty thousand or something a year for that lot, if not more.
So.
Or return.
And, and or. Not have it. It's part, it's a condition of.
Right, but they, what we did with forty main was allow them to have spots in that lot. But also metered the area so they can get, you know, they can get hang tags or something so that their customers can park there. But we can double, I mean, that's one way to go about it.
How many spaces in that lot?
I would have to go down a measure, but at least.
Is it that big?
It's pretty big.
That, I can't picture, I can't picture without being down there.
Yeah, no, it's definitely disappointing.
But right now, they lease the whole lot and don't use the whole.
It never gets used. It's, it's lost revenue, it's wasted space, it's lost parking space. It could be.
I think step one would be the same time. Be how many are basically.
Yeah. Okay, so I can work on that next. Term and with the other things I'm working on.
So going over my list, um the only other thing really that we have not talked about, um that's not included. So we didn't, I didn't include the till behind chip and the stump grinder. It seemed like from last term, we weren't gonna include those. Um is the CAD license, if there is to be a CAD license. So the county, while doing the radios, also coming out with a new CAD program, which is the software in the police vehicles. Um that controls the dispatch um and job. That new software, um like everything else probably comes with a license fee, but it has not been discussed yet. Don't even know when rollout is, but it's in the works.
It wasn't, it wasn't touched upon today with the radio conversation.
That's the only thing that I have that, um is there any other topics that we didn't touch that somebody wanted to speak about?
Well, I was hoping to identify, but it's, it is more, I guess it's more of a fund balance thing. I, I was hoping to identify and set aside money for. With the, the half the Department of State grant for the current consolidation study on highway.
We can put that in as a fund balance item. Cause it's, it's gonna be an engineering consultant, it's gonna be a one time. Um we would put in revenue and expense. And it would be.
It's a matching grant. And I think we just have to have that conversation. And see what the options are.
So it's twelve thousand five hundred.
And in terms of how likely are we to get it? The um Carl E. Blocker from Department of State said that they had, they've had a small number of requests over the last two years. And they've been able to fund all of them. I feel hopeful about it, like one of the few state grant opportunities I feel.
It'll go rolling. It's every month, so we don't have to wait for this year.
The deadline is end of July, like with.
If Phillips Town consolidation would be to Phillips Town, are we eligible to apply for the grant or would Phillips Town have to apply for the grant?
They're discussing it tonight in their workshop as well. I don't know if they canceled tonight. I didn't hear if they did. I don't think so.
No, it was last week.
Last week's. I think they were taking it up tonight. I have communicated with the supervisor and mayor. One word to see if Nelsonville was interested in being part of it too. They are on the fence. Um they do all private contract for their roads work and facilities work. But yeah, we have, we would have to work together. Each municipality would qualify for twelve thousand five hundred toward the study. And one of the municipalities would need to act as the lead for accepting the funds and distributing, paying the consultant. Whether it's us or them, one of the municipalities has to be the lead.
And so the lead agency would take care of um the grant side, but we'd still have the twelve thousand.
Right.
We just wouldn't have the second half of the expense, so I won't put the grant portion in.
Exactly. I follow up and find out if they did discuss it tonight. All right, Laura.
No, I have separate questions. Go for it. Um. Uh so on the second page, the fund balance transfers. Second page, your revenue. Yeah. Okay, so it shows the adopted amounts for the last couple of years. Are those the amounts of. Plan fund transfers, three hundred thirty. Three hundred thirty-eight, that one branch, five seven thousand. Now we're doing forty-eight thousand. Um, forty-eight thousand is the minimum that we need right now for the project that have been identified as being paid out of fund balance, at the engineers and stuff. Anything over that would be at the board's discretion to allocate fund balance for other large projects. Um, so last year of that three twenty-seven, three oh five of it was discretionary and the rest of it was for itemized. Um, I hate to use balancing the budget for, for very specifically, we talked about the storm drains. That eleven thousand and that forty-eight, it was in that three twenty-seven too. Um. So last year, two hundred ninety-five thousand and five thousand for village hall, so three hundred thousand went into just village-wide repairs to be allocated for projects. And we needed roof for this and that, and you know, as it's been talked about, things take longer, so some wish list items haven't been done.
That's, and having a lot of help with it.
Yeah, yeah. I guess I'm just asking it because we went right to, we went to looking at the tax rate, but we also have a drastically lower fund balance.
We draw, draw down.
Yeah.
Fund balance.
Yeah, I mean, like, like. That's the amount that we should be talking about.
It's a net zero. So last year, this three hundred twenty-seven, three hundred thousand of it went straight into building repairs. So if you take out those projects that didn't do and they were never planned, you would take three hundred out of last year. And the same thing for the year before. Um, if you wanted to use some of the fund balance, um, it would have to be for one-time projects. Um, if, you know, we can try and go through the budget and identify other one-time expenses. If there's anything that falls, comes to mind that you could think of that I may admit, I'm, I'm open to talking about it. Just not sure how much one-time things are really left in the budget.
But if it, but it's balanced, I'm sorry, I'm just still trying to wrap my head around it, but it's balanced now, and now we especially have all of the things that are recurring. The payroll and insurance, all those things. And then it seems like we're talking about a lot of things we're talking about seem like they're one-time, and we're deciding whether we can fit them in or not.
And so like what?
So like the truck. The, yeah.
And that's why I've said, if you wanna move forward, then we can pay for it on the dollar.
So maybe we're not in as bad of a situation as we think about trying to. It just seems like it's balanced now and we have most of the things here. I'm just.
It's the staffing that's really the thing.
And we can't put that in. We can't add that.
The Tahoe and the truck are the thing. Because they're just, in the past, they have been too financed, but there's nothing to say that we can't pay it. It, um, you know.
They're prioritizing what we draw down.
Right.
We can draw down from fund balance to get things done. What are the things we want? Do we wanna prioritize roof versus truck?
Yeah. Okay. And it also then maybe says a little bit of something in favor of contracting out rather than personnel, because that's something that can go from.
That's where I'm landing.
That's the only way we can work it at the moment, but that also speaks to why it might be good at looking at raising the taxes, because if we can't get our number higher, like we wanna grow it so that we can keep adding personnel. You know, we're adding one personnel piece this year potentially. Um, and then in future years, do we add more where we need them? Cause we're understaffed.
Our fund balance is healthy, very healthy, extremely for healthy, like how, how much wiggle?
It's relative to what you consider extremely healthy. Uh.
We have a lot. We have it's one point five.
That's what I'm asking. How much, how much is, how much can I spend of the fund balance without being irresponsible?
The state doesn't provide guidance on it. The state won't tell you yes or no. Um, the, the some guidance that they do give, there's twofold. One guidance is it's relative to your situation. So ten percent for a tiny village is much different than ten percent for like the city of Buffalo or something like that. So they won't put a flat percentage on it. Every year, the fiscal stress scores come out, um, you know, is your municipality in a financial stress situation? One of the questions that you can get points on, you don't want points. The village has never had more than seven points. You don't even get a rating unless you're at like thirty or forty point. Um, so one of the questions is your fund balance, either twenty or twenty-five percent of your budget. Um, if you answer no, then you get a couple of points. So a guidance may suggest indirectly that twenty to twenty-five percent would be a minimum. Um. But we are higher currently, and this has grown much more in the past couple of years than it ever has. A lot of it was due to COVID, actually.
Mm-hmm.
Um. And some of it is the deferred projects that we talk about that were budgeted with tax dollars. Um, storm drain sidewalks, um, you know, building maintenance was budgeted to be done, and then it doesn't happen for three years. So fifteen thousand each of those over three years, times three, you know, it adds up quicker.
Yeah. And we, we are, it is a red flag for um. I can't think of the word, cause I'm so tired. Uh, the controller.
That's what I was gonna say.
It's a red flag for the, for the, for the controller if you're sitting on funds and not using them um, for public good, right? We can't, we can't hoard, you can't hoard money. I mean, I don't know how that doesn't apply to.
Had done audits and that fund balances that need to are high, you see the more schools, districts have an actual restriction on them. You've, the, I've seen audits. So every week I get an email from the controller, and every so often there's audits, and then I read them for funds and see what the controller's looking at.
I love how you know something.
I'm looking, I don't read them in detail. I read the summary to see what the controller's looking at. Um, and a lot of, sometimes when they review budgets, they do stress that there's fund balance, balance in the budget for, you know, reoccurring expenses. Um, I have seen that.
Um, I feel like there's also a natural, I would, I would think it's a natural reaction for a taxpayer of like, I paid my taxes, you used it for something good, right? If you're gonna raise my taxes, that means you used up all of what I paid you last year for something good. And so.
The other side of this, making sure that we're using it.
Yes, um, before asking for more has a logic to it.
The village is in a unique situation, which there's these high hurdles. I am exploring the option of whether or not the general fund can pay for some of the dam work, because it is a village-wide capital improvement project. Typically, water pays for water, sewer pays for sewer, and, um, general fund tax dollars pays for everything else. Um, I haven't brought to sleep yet because I don't have definitive answers. Um, NICOM seems to think that that could be a possibility. And if we're looking at a five million dollar dam
Mm-hmm.
And a thirty-year bond payment on that is half the water fund, if this fund balance may come into play. Um, don't have anything definite. It's just a possibility, and then that would also help justify.
Yeah, that's it. Just tamped down all my excitement about paying for things with the fund balance.
And the board still can.
So what would you say is a healthy amount to use?
I don't know.
There's, there's absolutely no guidance anywhere on that.
But how far are we over the twenty to twenty-five percent?
That's the question.
That's the question.
Well, we're about, probably about sixty, sixty-five percent, right? You know, fund balance is one point five in our budget.
Right now, it's two, it's two point nine. Please, I'm sorry, say the numbers again. So right now, the budget's at two point nine, and the fund balance is one point five. So that's half.
So there, there's your margin.
But I brought the cautionary tale, looking long-term, is that if we do a lot of things and we go into the fund balance, what position does that put us in? If we do this year after year, what position is the village in five, six years down the road? Today, we have a healthy fund balance. As we discussed yesterday, the budget, the request are kind of aspirational this year compared to previous years. Five years of aspirational requests, we dip it to the fund balance.
You don't think it means aspirational requests. I, I think it means like really prudent. It's just, it's just.
No, the departments are.
No, 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 I know. I'm just, I'm saying it doesn't mean that then we say yes to everything. I think we still have a really close eye to it, but this is a.
Yeah.
The reality is there is also a physical work that needs to be done. There are streets that need to be fixed and sidewalks that need to be repaired. We've got money.
Yeah.
People shouldn't be tripping on our sidewalks when we, when we've got money.
Village hasn't always been like this. My understanding is that many years ago, it was literally punching pennies for staples.
Wasn't so long ago. It really wasn't so long ago. I mean, we'd have to give credit to the previous administration for, for man, for really sound management and bringing you on board. But, but Michelle, everything changed about how we, how this village manages finance once your brain was at the table. That is, there's no question in my mind, because I've been here long enough to have seen both. You, having you changed everything and Catherine too. You can attest to it.
I, I mean, I remember I couldn't understand sometimes who was at the best.
Yeah. So, so the goal for our next session, but, well, I think we're all probably too tired to try to figure out scheduling, but it sounds like we need to have a, a, a highway workshop.
I think next week we should focus on water and sewer, so it'll be after the twentieth, so it'll be working off the tentative budget, but the water and sewer is less involved.
Yeah.
Um, it's more straightforward. So we, next week, we should talk about water and sewer. We should talk about some more year-end spending for this year. Um, and then outside those two budget conversations, the board wanted to have. I wouldn't be a part of the highway conversation. I think that's more structuring and.
The other option is, it could be during the week. It doesn't have to be on one. We just have plenty of time to notice what we can do.
Also, all fresher, if we can pick times when people are available, we're fresher in the morning. By the time it gets ten, I'm, I am gassed.
Ten like.
Black nap.
Before like ten in the morning. Like I'm done by then.
There are some days.
All right, at six AM.
Um. So I guess that's something we can figure out when people are available. What are the days that you're in, in, in New Haven?
I mean, I can zoom in, but it's easier not.
And Monday and Tuesdays are your best days. Does.
I can do, juggle anything I have, like the zoom. I can move stuff, so I'll just kind of, if I know when I have to do it, I can do it. So I'm pretty flexible. Except for one of these.
Did you wanna do water and sewer kind of at night on, or during the day, then save the night conversation for something else?
Can you say during the day, are we talking nine o'clock or are we talking one o'clock?
We did it at various, we did them at various times last year. Last year, we did personnel during the day, and we did some of the year-end spending during the day. As I recall, water and sewer, we did, water and sewer, we did in an evening session. I think we should, I think that should stay in an evening session. Um.
Well, we've got water, so it'll be next week.
If we wanna do a session Monday morning, the twentieth, um, if we wanted to revisit, talk, we could talk about year-end spending, and if we wanted to revisit some some general fund stuff.
And so I'm not, uh, next Tuesday will work. It's spring break.
So you're available Monday or Tuesday. We do, we do have zoning stuff in the morning.
I mean, we could figure it out through emails, I guess then.
Yeah.
But let's leave them water and sewer at least in for that next Wednesday.
Wednesday, if you want, or if you're available Tuesday, we could do Tuesday morning at ten o'clock. Or.
Now, are we talking about Tuesday? I gotta confirm something for Tuesday.
And we're. I'd have been, um, zoning until ten thirty.
Tuesday, so Monday's better?
Let's see. Michelle, oh, you're saying you can come in.
I can do Mondays as long as it's not a payroll, and it's not payroll.
We'll do ten o'clock Monday.
Um. I have more complex, ten to eleven thirty, I could do. Or, or join later or something. I can do eleven thirty to one thirty.
Do that too. That's actually better for me. No, it's not better for Eliza though.
I can do it.
Oh, oh, cause Monday's a closed day.
Yeah, well, it's open, but I'm not there.
Yeah. Eleven thirty?
Eleven thirty Monday. I will notice it.
Maybe we can knock some stuff out one more friend or.
Year end. The year-end, for the years discussions and continuation of some general fund outlets.
Okay. And then, sorry, they, again, the topic, it's, it's water and sewer.
Yeah, I don't. So you want to do it's Wednesday.
Um, and year end, and then Wednesday night, in a regular workshop, will be water and sewer.
Okay.
That was eleven.
Eleven thirty.
Eleven thirty Monday.
And I'll have a hard stop at one thirty.
All right, let's get out of here.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, second.
Favor.
Okay.
Thank you.
After we got through the, the spreadsheet, it's like, okay, so now we go home. I don't know, now we discussed it. Here's like, I'm done.